On the meeting to order. City Laredo Regular Council Meeting, Council Chambers, 1110 Houston Street, January 28, 2025, 5:32 PM. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I am to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm on silence, please. Before we go into the minutes, I'd like to bring up certain items. Mayor. Point of order, roll call. Sorry, sorry, roll call first. Roll call, go ahead, please.
Honorable Mayor Dr. Victor D. Trevino.
President.
Councilmember District One Gilbert Gonzalez.
President.
Councilmember District Two Ricardo Rangel Jr.
President.
Councilmember District Three Melissa Sigarroa. Councilmember District Four Ricardo Rick Garza.
Here.
Councilmember District Five Ruben Gutierrez Jr.
President.
Councilmember District Six Dr. Tyler King.
Here.
Mayor Portem Vanessa Perez. Councilmember District Eight Alisa Sigarroa. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Mayor, want to make a mo-?
Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a motion, excuse me Sigarroa?
Yes, go ahead.
From District Three. Make a motion.
Second. Motion second, on the favor.
Aye.
Both, motion passes.
Mayor, if I may, approval of the minutes for December 2nd, 2024, and December 20th, 2024.
Before we go, let me move this items.
Yes, sir.
WBCA and public, on comments, on public comments, and number six for Yvette Limon. And move item 12104 after passing over section seven.
Mayor.
Yes.
Do you accept adding 112D2 to that, moving Black Solid Trail to that, that's the virtual recognition.
Although this will be added to 112A and 112, 112A, 12 and 3, and 112B plus items for Dr. King.
112, Mayor, can you accept 112B2? This is, I believe Texas here, and they can give that presentation as well. What's up here?
You accept amendments, Mayor?
You accept amendments?
112 what?
112, 112B2.
Accepted. Second. Motion second, on the favor.
Aye.
Both, motion passes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Would it be possible, and Councilmember Garza, would you like to bring your item up as well, because it would be a presentation on utilities?
It'll, 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 I'm not sure if this can be questioned or answered, so the staff, staff related, so we might be able to wait until the panel comes in. But thank you, appreciate that.
All right. First of all, WBCA will bring them up. It'll be the representatives. They're going to present it.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Afternoon. Thank you for having us, Mayor, Dr. Trevino, all the members of City Council, city leadership. Thank you all very much for having us here today. My name is Jaime Fuentes. I am this year's president-elect for the 127th Washington's Birthday Celebration Association. And to my left is Second Vice President Anamela Herbig, and to my right, our current treasurer, Rafael Martinez. We're here to formally invite all of the people of Laredo, including all the leadership, to our festivities, our community facilities, which kickstarted most recently with our Commander Reception at the Sains Auto Arena. And we'll go through March 1st through the end of our celebration with our, capping off with our golf tournament. In between all, as you all know, we have a lot of different events that we do to enhance the quality of life and the, as showcase Laredo to a much grander stage. And we appreciate this couldn't be done without all the support we get from the people in this room, and all the citizens of Laredo that come out to support us. So we'd like to just say thank you. We have our By George magazines out for the people to get. We very proudly have been able to print 65,000 of those that will be spread out throughout South Texas and into Mexico that will help, you know, bring tourism to the city. And we have also arrived with a gift for you all. Our, our this year's poster called Love Letter to the Border by Hansel Seale, very great in the little different poster than we've, we've over the big couple some too, but they always have their little quirks and their little, their little Easter eggs, I like to call them. So just on behalf of the organization, thank you all very much, and we look forward to seeing everybody at our events.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Right then, item number six on Ms. Yvette Limon, recognition. Is she here?
Yes, Mayor.
Do you have a recognition?
Yes.
Mayor and City Council hereby recognizes Yvette Limon, Laredo Bridge System Director, in recognition of over 20 years of service and contribution to the city of Laredo and international trade in the community. Thank you very much, congratulations. And would like to hear, let's get a picture first.
Thank you, Mayor.
Somebody want to bring me a brick, please? Send this next guy now.
I'm moving to the back.
Ready, one.
You can be the quarterback.
One, two, three, one, two, three. One more.
Ready, one, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, a video here.
Great. Thank you very much for your service, and would like a couple of words from you here in the front.
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Please. Ms. Limon, I just want to tell you, thank you so much for everything you've done for our community, for our bridge systems. You've done a wonderful job. I know it's been a tough one for you, because I know we ask a lot of you, we certainly did, man. So from the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you for sticking with us, thank you for being with the city of Laredo over 20 years. Can't thank you enough, man. Thank you so much, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, I'll remember.
Mayor, may I add something?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, Mr. Wilo Tierras, I just want to say Ms. Limon, on behalf, you know, my behalf, thank you so much. When I started, you were one of the first people that reached out and asked me if I had any questions. So thank you so much for that opportunity and show me the ropes of how the, how the bridge system works. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, last time Yvette Limon for the record. It was an honor to have served as cashier superintendent, assistant director and director for the Laredo Bridge System. I want to thank you all for your leadership. Mr. Nebb, Chief, Mr. Valdez, congratulations, Ramon. Thank you for your support while in engineering, to my colleagues, and last but not least, to my family in the back and to my staff. I couldn't have done it without them. I have, I had wonderful bridge employees, over 150 employees that work day, night, weekends, holidays, in support of international trade. So without them, I couldn't have done it. So thank you so much for this recognition. It was an honor, I enjoyed it. The late hours, the calls with the system failures and the traffic backups, but nonetheless, I enjoyed every moment of it, and now I'm getting to enjoy my, my two grandsons, so.
Congratulations.
New role. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Mayor, Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Limon, I apologize for the late entrance, but I just wanted to add to my colleagues' appreciation of all of your work, all these years of service. I know that the bridge operations have grown tremendously under your leadership, that you oversaw that, and every interaction I had with you was always so professional, and you shared, as my colleague, Councilmember Rangel was saying, so much valuable information. I really appreciate your leadership during that time.
Thank you, thank you. Also, I know there's several members here to the Port of Entry Advisory Committee. They're a pillar, they thought in the best interest of the trade community and every topic we tackled, and we worked through it. So I want to thank the Port of Entry Advisory Committee as well. Councilmember Perez just walked in, thank you so much for your leadership. It was an honor and a pleasure.
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you for being a great liaison to the Port of Entry. I know we spent a lot of hours together, myself and a lot of people on the committee, and we really appreciate all your hard work. And we're sad to see you go, but you know, you're always welcome here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Can we take another picture with all the councilmembers?
Hey, Ben. Congratulations.
Sure. You don't want to come?
No, you're good there.
I'm okay.
Right.
I ain't joking, look at the chair.
Can somebody get a stool?
Just sit on Tyler right quick.
Ready, one, two, three. One more here.
Ready, one, two, three.
Can we take another picture, but with management? Okay, first a video here. Management? Yes. I want it. Okay, ready, one, two, three. One more here.
Ready, one, two, three.
Can we take another picture, but with management? Okay, first a video here. Management? Yes. I want it. Okay, ready, one, two, three. One more here.
Ready, one, two, three.
Can we take another picture, but with management? Okay, first a video here. Management? Yes. I want it. Okay, ready, one, two, three. One, two, three, cheese.
One, two, three, thank you.
Thank you.
One, two.
Thank you for everything, appreciate it. Big thing for you. Congratulations.
Yes, I'll, yes.
All right, Mr. Secretary, for the record, we have Councilwoman Valesa Perez, District Two, and Councilman Melissa Sigarroa, District Three. Motion second, on the favor.
No motion, no sir.
No motion, no sir. All right. Let's proceed. Yeah, we'll proceed with 112A. Discussion with possible action to increase bridge tolls as part of C25C-06, a traffic management strategy during the known peak hours, in an effort to reduce congestion and emissions from idling and reduction of commercial and non-commercial interaction, and any matters related thereto. Now, the reason I brought this item forward is to start the discussion on raising the bridge tolls. This is not going to happen overnight, because my goal is not to disrupt successful international trade environment that we currently enjoy, but I want to start with a plan of action to increase, while at the same time obtaining some policy goals for the public to balance their quality of life when it comes to impending expansions. So what I would like to direct management to do within the next six months, and my motion is to recommend an increase on the amount of the tolls, a timeline for implementation to include the trade industry in their discussions, and whether the policy of goals of achieving less congestion and reducing commercial and non-commercial traffic, can this be achieved? I'm still going to engage our Mexican counterparts, as they also have a role to play in this. I'll second for discussion. Second.
If I may. Discussion.
Second for discussion.
Second.
Second, on the favor?
No, 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 no.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Sorry, I asked for the discussion, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Question, when you mentioned during known peak hours, what hours are we specifically talking about? Because our bridge system is open so much, and it's always peak time. So what were you thinking about, Mayor, when it came to the time itself?
The reason for this is peak hours is when we, when we have the most amount of traffic versus when there's less amount of traffic. And that's a discussion we need to have to determine that. So this is a, a method to identify what are the peak hours, what are not the peak hours, so we can modify on how the tolls will be increased. So this is just the explanation.
What, what, once peak hours and from, once peak hours from the staff are spoken about, then they will come back to us and let us, let us know what amounts will be increased?
Exactly.
And then we'll discuss that here again, correct?
Exactly, that's correct. Go ahead.
Sir, management, do we have the amount that we charge right now?
We do.
Yes, sir.
Can we give it a present?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council, Kent Richard, interim director. Currently, the commercial rates per axle are $4.75 per axle. So if you're looking at a typical 18-wheeler, which is a five-axle truck, that's $23.75 for that crossing.
Twenty-three, I'm sorry, sir.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-three what?
Twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Can I have that?
Do we, do we have the comparisons of the Valley or Eagle Pass for?
We are working on an analysis of that. We have been talking with our competitors in our custom district, which is from Del Rio all the way to Brownsville. We can do an in-depth study on that, and we can get back to the committee in the next couple of months.
Can you bring it back when, in the next council meeting, so we can have and compare to see and how far we are from, from those, from them, and we can have the increase?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we track that on an annual basis, so what Mr. Richards is talking about is bringing it all up to date, because we're, we check, we check every year to make sure we're in line with everybody else, but the idea is to get the most accurate information for that.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I know we do have a comparison chart, because we talked about this at the Port of Entry. I don't know if there's any way we could, if there's a, we don't have access to that at this time, but I know that this is not, Mayor, thank you for bringing this up, this is an important topic. This has been discussed at the Port of Entry a couple of times when, before we, when we first started working with the Port of Entry, Mines Road was a lot more congested than it is now. So this topic actually came up at that time, but the discussions about raising tolls and designating specific use for some of the funding has come up again recently, where we could start to pre-allocate or start to save up in combination with some efforts like the TRZ, start to put some of this money aside for infrastructure improvements for the, you know, the high-traffic areas, the commercial, because those are the ones that run through a lot quicker. We see potholes very quickly, because we have, you know, asphalt, and then we have a lot of issues. So I think this is a good effort, if we're talking about peak times, but I think if you look at some of the comparisons, I don't have the numbers with me right now, but we are lower than a lot of other ports. We do charge less. Some of our competitors are charging a lot more, and we're seeing a high volume, but we're paying for that high volume in terms of wear and tear on our roads, congestion, idling trucks, things like that. I think that it would probably be good for, I know the industry's not in favor of an increase, and I know that they pre-designate their contracts six months to 12 months in advance, so we wouldn't want to make changes today, because that would affect some of their contracts that they've already set pricing for, and we don't want to cause anybody to lose money or anything like that. But we do need to have this conversation, and I think it's a good step forward for us. It's unrealistic for our prices to stay exactly the same for over 10, 11, 12 years, which is kind of where we're at right now. But I, I think during peak hours would be good, because the World Trade Bridge gets used the most. Peak hours affect school buses, they affect, especially during school pickup hours, so from the hours of 2 to 6, 2 to 7, those are like mostly where you see a lot of non-commercial mixed in with the commercial, because you have a lot of school buses, you have a lot of parents to and from the elementary schools, the high schools get out, you have school buses bringing the kids from United High School over to the Mines Road, and then you have people leaving work, that work out there around 5, trying to get out of the, the traffic. So if we could route some of the traffic, or incentivize people to move some of those trucks to Columbia during those specific hours, I think would help a lot for the alleviation of the commercial versus non-commercial. Meanwhile, we try to work towards something like the River Road and some of these other arterials that we're trying to get off the ground. So I think it's a good step forward, I think it would help to have at least a plan for some of this funding, because we could find a balance and gain favor with the industry, we have a better plan of how we're going to use the funding.
Like I said, we'll, we'll check, we'll make sure our analysis is up to date, we'll get additional information from our competitors. This item, Mayor, was brought on the January 15th Port of Entry Committee meeting. The committee chose not to discuss the bridge tolls themselves. I am happy to state that tonight, there is a few Port of Entry committee members here, as well as the chairman, and they would like to touch bases on this, if you allow them.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Valdez.
Good afternoon, Rick Laudell, Port of Entry Advisory Chair. So we were brought this, this item up, and I want to read it verbatim as how it was brought up. Discussion with possible action on raising bridge toll fee, fee to fund, one, a port of entry, a port authority department, two, bridge expansion projects and legislative activities associated with the port. So this is what we were referred to. We were not asked for peak hours, we were not asked for anything of that nature. So referring to that, as it was stated to us, as a Port of Entry Advisor Committee Chair, and I speak on, on the behalf of, of the committee, and also a concerned resident and business owner in the Laredo, illaredo regarding the proposed bridge increased tolls, while recognizing the importance of maintaining and improving our city's infrastructure, we in the trade and transportation industries must respectfully decline to support the measure, this measure city management has brought forth until further clarification is provided regarding how additional funds will be allocated, particularly in relation to the development of a port authority you mentioned. The bridges in Laredo play a critical role in facilitating trade, supporting our local economy, and maintaining our city's reputation as a vital U.S. hub for international commerce. However, the lack of specific information about the toll increase, such as precise increase, the project that will fund, the projects it will fund, the timeline or implementation, and how it aligns with the long-term vision of the port authority, makes it challenging to evaluate the necessity and potential benefits. As members of the community, we are fully committed to supporting initiatives that promote growth and economic vitality. Transparency in financial matters is key to fostering trust and ensuring that stakeholders, including residents and business owners, can make informed decisions. We kindly request the city first adopt the port authority that was created back then by the Honorable State Rep. Henrik Wayat in 1989, and then work on a detailed breakdown on the intended use of the increased toll revenue, and how it aligns with broader infrastructure and economic goals. Additionally, I encourage the city to, in open discussions and/or public forums, where stakeholders can express their perspectives and concerns. Thank you very much, Mayor, for your attention to this matter. We appreciate the hard work you, City Council, and your administration do to serve our community. I'm confident that with greater transparency and dialogue, we can find a path forward that benefits all of Laredo. So it, it's a slippery slope, right? We haven't increased rates, like you said, Councilwoman, in 10, 12 years, whatever that might be. But the last time I heard that there was an increase was 2016, and there was an increase that was proposed to City Council, so that we can work on the fast lanes. The increase happened, but the funds were not allocated to the fast lanes. Then city manager Orazio de Leon had to divert funds from other projects to be able to create those fast lanes. So in other words, we didn't really see the benefit of that increase, it was just a shuffling around of money. So as you can tell, when our committee was brought up, you know, that there was going to be another rate increase, everybody, you know, pretty much said, you know, it's, it's, it's not, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt down the line, all the way up north to customers. There are many proposed ideas, there's much more to talk, to be, you know, talked about. But at this moment, I would like, the way it was proposed to us was to be able to fund a port authority, a port authority that can take on and tackle the bridge expansion projects and other, you know, projects that, that are correlated to. So I'd like to, to see what, any questions you guys might have, or what conversations we can open.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Laudell, I appreciate your perspective. I think that it is the beginning of the conversation about raising fees, but at this point, I think I am inclined to listen to the bridge department, to see what they see in our competitive field, what it seems that other communities are doing. You know, the city of Laredo is in the unique position to own its bridges, and it becomes a basis of revenue for the city. So it's not just bridge, specific bridge projects, because those end up getting funded by the city as well, but it's also infrastructure needs to deal with all of the increased trade that you see, the industrial complexes, all the utilities extensions that we need to do, the extension of our police and fire, I mean, so much more, so much more goes into funding this trade industry. It has all these different arms, tentacles that reach into different departments. So I think the conversation, as far as I understand, is that we want to be competitive with our, our competitors, but we have needs as a city, and so the bridge department is here to see how they can contribute to that revenue, so that we can meet the needs of the residents who live here, not just specific to the bridge, but all of the other places where that pressure from increased trade happens to fall as well.
Right. There's also the Laredo Water Carriers Association President that's here, and I think, you know, he'd like to say something, if you'd like.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of Council, city management. Jerry Maldonado, Chairman of the Board for the Laredo Motor Carriers Association. I am also the Director of Operations for Warren Transport, a trucking company, asset based, that operates, you know, within Laredo, in Mexico. We, you know, the item on the agenda today, 112A1, specifically goes into the bridge toll increase. We understand that things cost more every year. We completely understand that it happens in our world, and we understand it happens in the city and in the bridge. What we want to do is have the conversation, be included in the conversation, as you just mentioned, you know, with management, with, with these things, you know, have a plan where we can go to an extent and say, all right, within this timeframe, there will be an increase, you know? We also, in that study, let's also consider the fact, how much has our industry grown, meaning bridge crossings? How much have they increased in the last five years? All that also means- conversation, as far as I understand, is that we want to be competitive with our, our competitors, but we have needs as a city. And so the Bridge Department is here to see how they can contribute to that revenue so that we can meet the needs of the residents who live here, not just specific to the bridge, but all of the other places where that pressure from increased trade happens to fall as well.
Right. There's also the Laredo Motor Carriers Association President that's here, and I think, you know, he'd like to say something if you'd like.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, city management. Jerry Maldonado, Chairman of the Board for the Laredo Motor Carriers Association. I am also the Director of Operations for Warren Transport, a trucking company, asset-based, that operates, you know, within Laredo in Mexico. We, you know, the item on the agenda today, 112A1 specifically goes into the bridge toll increase. We understand that things cost more every year. We completely understand that it happens in our world, and we understand it happens in the city and in the bridge. What we want to do is have the conversation, be included in the conversation, as you just mentioned, you know, with management, with, with these things, you know, have a plan where we can go to an extent and say, all right, within this timeframe, there will be an increase, you know. We also, in that study, let's also consider the fact, how much has our industry grown, meaning bridge crossings? How much have they increased in the last five years? All that also means additional revenues for the city. Yes, developments also take, you know, costs for utilities, et cetera. But every development that is being developed also needs to pay for their own stuff. If I build another terminal, there's costs associated with that, you know. At the end of the day, you know, we want to be a resource for you all. We are experts respectfully in what we do. And, and please use that, use as, as a resource to do this. You know, if you just throw the, the word out, we're going to raise the bridge tolls, clearly the industry is going to say, oh, what do you mean? No, we don't want that. But if we have the conversation and analyze and use the data, you know, the peak hour issue, to an extent, we can really control that because of the way our world works. The bridge is closed from 11:30 or midnight to 8:00 a.m., and that's fine. The drivers go home. More than 90% of the drivers that cross every day live in Mexico. They're Mexican nationals. So every morning when their shift starts, their first load comes from Nuevo Laredo this way. And that, that's how it works. And then once they get here, let's say they, they wake up right and early, they're here by 9:30, they have to wait for another load to be ready to go back into Mexico. And that's the problem we have as an industry. Unfortunately, the way it's built, the customer base that we have, which, you know, we, we service and, and the city is blessed to have them in Laredo, they work the way they work. So the loads going back into Mexico are not ready at 10:00 in the morning, unfortunately. They are mostly ready in the afternoon, and that's why we have peak hours. We cannot promote who we are and expect not to have side effects. We are the busiest port. There will be side effects. There will be bottlenecks. We do everything in our power to minimize them as an industry, but there's only so much we can do. Very recently, we sat down, we had the pleasure to go to Nuevo Laredo and sit down with Anam, with the Coronel and everybody in Nuevo Laredo. And he openly said to us that in the last five years, he has lost 41 people from his staff. Forty people, 41 people have left the Nuevo Laredo aduana, and he never got replacements for them. That is also a key factor. Because at 5:00, 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night, when everybody's trying to go into Mexico and the lines are on Mines Road, there's not enough staff to open more, more, to process them faster. So there's other factors. It's not just, you know, the industry wanting to cross late. Believe me, we, we want to go home too. You know, our drivers want to go home too. But it's something that, you know, we, we thank you for letting us be here and speak, and let's have the conversation, you know, let, let's continue it, and there may be things we can do to, to make it better. Will it ever be perfect? I think it's, it's going to be a little difficult.
And this is the purpose of, of agenda to, to start conversations and identify and include industry, include management, and include everybody. So these are things, did you want me to read the, he wanted me to read the, the item again. Discussion with possible action to increase bridge tolls as part of a 25 dash C-06, a traffic management strategy during known peak hours in an effort to reduce congestion and emissions from idling and the reduction of commercial and non-commercial interaction and any matters related to. That is, that is item.
Quick question, well, not question, it's just actually, yeah, maybe the question. Mr. or management or Mr. Laurel or Mr. Maldonado, can you answer this question? It's just for the community out there, just to find out, what does a port of entry or port of authority consist of, and what do they do? So they can know what, you know, what we're requesting, if we, if we do go that route, we want to know what does a port authority do, where does that money go to, or how does that, how do they?
In a nutshell?
And something that we can just, so they can listen and know what's, what we're doing, and just because all right now, the only thing they're hearing is, we're going to increase, you know, we're going to do a toll increase. So let's just, you know, come together and say, hey, this is what we're going to do, this is what a port authority does, and this is what the city does.
So in the research that I did, and, and we, some of us did in the, in the Port of Entry Advisory Committee, currently there, it doesn't exist on a land port. All the port authorities that currently exist are with oceans, right? So that does not mean that we can't create one, right? We can create one. And it basically, in the ones that it does exist, they're the ones that manage the issues of the port completely, from, you know, needing to pave the roads to increasing the bridge tolls and to guiding the fund to make sure that it stays within that port to better it and make it work and make it bigger, make it, the bridge expansion is coming up, right? And that's a topic that unfortunately, as, as far as I know, because we asked, the, the cost of it is going to be in the millions. But there is, from, from our meeting, there is right now no, no funding to start the bridge project, right? So where are those millions going to come from? We have to figure that out as a community, right? The port authority will essentially take over, from what I understand, the actual bridge and its, its operation and its revenues and its problems too, you know, not only the, not only the good, everything included, and then manage that as its own entity.
So Mr. Maldonado, in other words, you're trying to tell us that if we do create a port authority, let's say, like Ms. Councilwoman Cigarras said, that main, the, our main bread and butter for what we, we get our main revenue comes from the bridge. So the port authority is going to have that opportunity to control that, that, that funds?
So that's what we've been talking about. In other ports, like Mr. Maldonado said, the port authority does control those funds. Here, it has to be a hybrid because city of Laredo is already using those funds to survive, right, and to fund other department projects. So what the original item on the agenda was, the increase or a percentage of the increase was going to start funding the port authority. The port authority was not going to take all $75 million that, that it handles right now. It was going to start small and then grow as, as, as we go. So no, we are not here to recommend that the port, a port authority, future port authority, take 100% of the bridge toll revenues. That is, we can't do that because that is your main, like you said, bread and butter, your golden goose. So the, it would basically be a, a department within the city that would manage, that would be run by somebody who's internationally trade inclined.
So, so the clarification there was that. Further clarification on what it would be? Respectfully, I don't know if management or legal could, could do some research on, on what it actually, how could actually be structured?
Mayor, can I maybe?
Okay.
Just, I know it's a little bit complicated for the port authority because we're, it would be intertwined with city operations in terms of police coordination, fire coordination when it comes to traffic. So I think that's where the difficulty comes with the inland port having a port authority. So there's, there's, there's some, some, some logistics that need to be kind of worked out. And then the legislation as it is right now does designate 100% to this authority, which, you know, is, is, it does interfere. But we do, we do, when we created the Port of Entry Advisory Committee, I think it was a good step forward for the city to recognize just how important it is to have you all at the table advising us. And we've done a lot of great work over the years to try to help alleviate some of these issues. So in terms of like coordinating with the industry, I think that's a good step forward. I think that we still need to work out how this would be structured and the logistics of it. But I definitely respect your concerns and, and your opinions, and, and I think that those are very valid and expressive of the, what we hear from a lot of other people in the industry. And I think we would have to take those into consideration because you don't want to agree to increasing funding and then not see any improvements because we know that we've got requests made for improvements at the bridge that we're not seeing. We're not, we're not seeing some of these things that have been in the plans to make the, the bridges specifically more efficient. And I think if we're going to think about increasing revenue, we need to make sure that we can fund some of those specific projects and fund, fund some of the specific concerns that the industry has. Otherwise, we're never going to get your all support, and that's important for us to have it, so.
Another question that was asked was, is the increase going to be just on trucks? Or is Bridge One and Bridge Two also going to be affected by, and pedestrians also going to be affected by it? Because I do, I, I mean, respectfully, not only Mexican trucks come over here and use our roads, but Mexican cars and Mexican citizens come over here and use our, our facilities. So is it just going to be for trucks? Is it going to be for cars? How's, you know, there's a lot of questions that, that need to be asked and answered.
And all of this will be discussed, and that's the reason why management is going to chime in on this also.
Mayor, if I may?
Who's first?
Just, just one last comment. Industry, just so you know, this is just the beginning talks of it.
Yes.
If it should happen, it's going to happen over a year from now. So we're just going to bring it back. Staff will bring it back to us, let us know. And then, of course, you will certainly be involved with the discussions of what the increase is going to be, if there's any. And as far as pedestrians and commercial vehicles and your typical car, well, that's probably a piece that we need to take into consideration as well. So it's something the staff needs to bring back to us. So, yeah, don't, don't bite our heads off yet.
No, no, no.
Maybe next time, but not now.
No. No, and we understand that, and we, we appreciate that, that this item was sent to the Port of Entry Advisory Committee, Mayor. And, you know, we're fully engaged in whatever it is that you guys need. We, like Mr. Maldonado said, we are the, the subject matter experts. So whatever it is you need on trade and transportation, we're here.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we ask the comments from the, from the, from management?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council, Port of Entry Authority, and with everything that we're doing. Let me, let me cover first. We should not be raising rates just to raise rates. I mean, I think we see the signs. If we haven't raised them for a while, that means we haven't looked at it in a very, the, the entire model that we have to. When we look at our rate structure, and we are in the process of a rate structure review with the utilities right now. And I, I just wanted to kind of cover some of those points with that because you're supposed to look at the historical revenue, the, the expense trends, current projected budgets. What are we trying to do with the money? It's exactly what you're saying. What are we trying to accomplish? What are, what are we not doing right, and what do we need to do better? We look at our reserves. We look at our fund balance. We look at our debt service. We looked at our fix and our variable cost. So the idea is that we want to make sure that whatever our rates are set at are to cover the cost of the service that are associated. And I would say that the, the funds that are brought through the bridge revenue into the city as well through the general, general fund, that is part of the cost of doing business for us with that structure. The conversation of a port authority to where our structure is now, that is a separate portion of that conversation that can happen. You can, you can develop out a port authority in a lot of different ways. We just talked about a few here. There's a lot of different methods that can be built within that structure. So I think we need to walk through that as well, too. If I go back to the mayor's item on there, what the mayor's item was on there for was is that we have a big influx, and, and we'll, we'll be able to show you the trend line as to how many trucks are crossing at, at what time of day, because there's a, there's a big start at the beginning, and then it kind of tapers off a little bit. And then there's a, I think everybody's trying to cross at the end of the day as well, too. And depending on how our systems all work, then it shifts it all the time. But we, we should be able to see, you should see a bell curve or a trend line, right, that shows here's where majority of the traffic is happening. I think we'll be able to do the same thing at Bridge One and Two. We can look at all of that. The idea, and Laredo has tried this before, where they've tried to incentivize rather than disincentivize. So there's a difference within that, that terminology, right? What we are saying is, let's set the rate here, but then if you're going to travel across at this window, then we'll, we'll, there, there's a premium to be paid, a convenience fee to come at this point in time. That's what that conversation is. I, I would like to make sure, we just got done with board and commission training last night with all, all of our boards and commissions. I would like to make sure that management works with the Board of Entry to put, help put this model together so that when you get the information as the council, you have all that information at your fingertips for that. It'll take us a little while to run through that because I don't think it's just about raising a fee. It's about what are we trying to get done with that? And I think that's going to be the key to exactly what everybody's talking about. But I love the conversation because I don't think we can sit idle much anymore. I think we all feel the pressure of what's happened on Mines Road and all this. And I think, Ricky had said it, is that it's just the beginning.
Yes.
It's going to, it's going to grow from here. And I think that's why we just need to be in front, in front of this thing. And so we'll, we'll be able to move it very quickly. What I will do is I, I think we can get the crew together. We'll bring, we'll bring back to the council at the next meeting what we're going to be able to accomplish and give you a timeframe as to how long it'll take it to get done. There will be a multitude of steps in there because if we initiate a true rate study to review all of this information, we have to set up a system for that as well, too. But if that's acceptable to everybody, I'd be happy to help.
We do have a motion in the second.
Mayor, just, just to be clear about the motion, though. The, the motion is not necessarily, because the way the item's written is to increase bridge tolls. So just for the record, Mr. Secretary, can we clarify that the motion is not to directly increase tolls today? It's to do what?
We can make the motion to increase and evaluate my recommendations of management and industry.
Mr. Neb just had mentioned.
Yes, yes. That's the motion. Okay, that is the motion? Second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Joe.
112A2, discussion with possible action to use mayor priority funds for 25 dash C dash 07 ADA improvements at the Health Department, not to exceed $100,000 or any matters related to it. All right, second. All right. I brought the item up as a supplement to the ADA improvements at the Health Department that would cover the facility, this facility. And would like to use the mayor's priority fund for these improvements, being that we're medical underserved. We may not see more federal funds coming in. Hopefully, we will. But this is something that one anticipates, so that, that is the reason for the motion.
Motion second.
Second, motion second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. And 112A3, discussion with possible action to revamp qualifications and 25 dash C-08 standardization term limits from some of the, some or all the voluntary city committees and any matters related thereto. Sponsors, Councilwoman Enzo Perez. And now I brought this item up because we could have a discussion over the standardization of the committees. But I understand that some of the committees are governed by state statute. But there is some room for improvement when it comes to attendance, qualifications, term limits, and all the meetings being videotaped or livestreamed. So these, these are, these are issues that sometimes don't have, happen at these committee meetings. So we want to see if we can standardize. Second for discussion?
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Mr. Neb, I understand you had a committee meeting or a committee training yesterday. What did you think of the outcome, and does that fall in line with these items brought up by the mayor?
You know, Mayor and City Council, thank you for that question as well, too. We, Laredo has done board commission training occasionally throughout. We, we intend to do it on an annual basis because these citizen committees are very important to us, just like the conversation we have with the Port of Entry. Every one of them should serve a purpose. When I, when I got here two years ago, one of the requests from the council was, please review all the boards, commissions. If, if they're not doing anything, then let's, let's look at whether or not they needed to be there. I wanted to get a foundational set. It took me a little longer to get to this conversation with the boards and commissions, but they are all advisory in nature, and so they are supposed to be providing advice to the city council. So if we're not getting advice from our citizen committees, then I don't know if they're performing the way to the level that we all wanted them to. So that was, that was where I started with this. I think one of the things that we discovered throughout the conversations and everything, as we were building this out for that, exactly with what the mayor is talking about there, we have a, we have a set standard that we use within our ordinances as to how we treat them all. But then, over the years, we have created some subgroups within our groups that we treat some differently than others for different reasons. Now, we all, we have the statutory ones, the, the big ones like Plan Commission, everything. They are regulated by statute and such. But we have, almost all of them have the ability to say, this is how we will operate with them. But then we create a, if you, if you look at the list on the city secretary's site, we have ad-hocs, we have task force, we have committees, we have boards, we have commissions. And that, it all blends itself to having just a little bit different rule for that. Most of them have bylaws, but not all of them. Most of them have, if they have to have certain requirements in them, but not all of them. And I think that's where, what, what the mayor is seeing as well, too, is something that we, we've been working on, is trying to get it a little more standardized so that when our citizens are. My, my fear is, and I think that's where we have some of our boards and commissions that are not meeting on a regular basis the way they should. And we told everybody last night, please meet on a monthly basis. And if it's a short meeting and nothing, no, no action, then at least you've communicated with each other and you, and you moved it forward. I truly believe we have over 400 people on those boards, commissions, and committees that should, should be helping you do do the work that we're trying to accomplish. And so I think, I think that's my background with that, uh, on, on what, where we've been headed with that. I think this is, uh, well-placed for this. We need to walk through our ordinances and make sure that we've standardized that. Uh, I know we talked a little bit, I think Mayor, Mayor got the chance to speak with them last night as well, too. Sometimes the term limits kind of get in the way of us as well, too, because they're voluntary positions. They're, they're, they're providing their, their experiences, they're providing their education, skill sets and such. And I, I don't know if that's exactly what we want to do. Uh, they are all tied to, almost all of them are tied to each one of you individually. So there's a, a rotation if we replace, uh, you know, through, through, uh, through the term limits that you have as well, too. So in my mind, I think this is gonna be really good for the next step of that. Because I want to make sure all of our, all of our citizen people know exactly how appreciative we are of them, their support and their, their work and that they, they feel like they're making a purpose and they're making a difference for what we're trying to accomplish. And so I, I believe that was the directive of the council when, when I, when I took that on, and so that's where we're at right now.
Okay. Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, I didn't want to bring item.
Oh, go ahead. You had your item? Yeah. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Okay. Uh, it's one twelve, uh, D two, uh, presentation by Rock Solid Trails in discussion with possible action regarding the completion of their, uh, mountain biking and trails concept plan, which was, uh, paid for by the City of Laredo in twenty twenty-four, with discussion on how it could be implemented and funded and any other matters incident thereto. Uh, so just a little background on this one, and I, I know we have a lot to get to, so I'll try to make it as quick as possible. But basically, uh, the cycling community, uh, you know, has been wanting and needing a, a revamp of the Shiloh hiking bike trails. Uh, there's constant flooding and deterioration, uh, of those trails, uh, over the years. Uh, and the, the idea is to enhance them and preserve them. So last year, we, uh, we contracted with Rock Solid Trails, world-class, um, trail company. Uh, and they came down from Wisconsin, and they're based out of Bentonville, Arkansas and Michigan. They came down, uh, and they, um, spent, uh, about four days here, uh, looking at our trail system there. But also they, when they got here, they wanted to know, are there any other trail systems near recreational community centers? So Mr. Tommy Ramirez from Parks also, uh, took them over to, uh, uh, Fasken Rec Center, uh, fa, near Father Magnable, and the trails there. And then also Haynes Rec Center, uh, near Chacon Creek. And so those two extra things were added along the way. But the, the focus has been on enhancing the Shiloh trails, but then, you know, they, they, they kind of gave us an extra look. So, you know, to, we paid nineteen thousand five hundred dollars for this plan, okay? So this is, uh, this is just a high-level concept plan. This is, Rock Solid, for example, is a design-build company, but they're, they're currently, they just did the planning. Uh, we have, um, Hogan on the line from Wisconsin to present this, uh, virtually, uh, and kind of give an overview of what they came up with. And I will, uh, leave it up, leave it up to him.
Thank you, Tyler. Yep, uh, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, again, my name's Hogan Kosis, I'm the senior trail planner at Rock Solid. Uh, I appreciate being here. Thank you, council members and elected officials for pursuing this activity. Um, you know, one of the original engagements of this project was to make a site visit uh, that was purely based around how can we increase recreational opportunity, uh, you know, in this, in the town of Laredo. And so this trail concept plan really focuses on improving those recreational opportunities and really enhancing the quality of life. One thing I want to preface through this document as we cruise through is that you'll see a lot of bike references and bike relevancy, uh, but we are a multi-use company. We are not just a bike company. So we, we pride ourselves in our approach and inclusivity and reducing barriers when it comes to accessing the outdoors. Um, as a company, we really focus highly on how people can be affected by the outdoors. And what that really means is providing spaces outdoors that people can use that are, you know, a free service to the public that ultimately creates a sense of community because of how people interact with each other and are able to enjoy, uh, the amenities that are put forth. Uh, so, uh, in this project, in this pursuit, we looked at goals and opportunities, which is ultimately, you know, opportunities and constraints, uh, within the, the city of Laredo. We looked at median age, we looked at potential users, um, and we looked at the population and their love of the outdoor sports. As it pertains to, excuse me, the analysis piece, um, we essentially are, you know, we, we were contracted to do an analysis on the trail system and then offer up some creative ideas within the Shiloh Trail System. So a lot of it was onsite observation and how things could be improved upon. And so this first part of the presentation is really about making a site visit, documenting tread needs, um, how the trail's being used, how it's being maintained, um, and then trying to find really creative solutions that really have an impacting, uh, you know, legacy, so to speak, of how these trails impact the community. Um, so looking at bike and pedestrian infrastructure, the, we looked at greenway corridors. Um, we looked at the urban trail experience of the town of Laredo. Uh, we acknowledged the city leadership support in that space. Uh, we looked at neighborhood activation, community centers, and how to effectively promote an active lifestyle within the town. Um, a big portion of how we've approached this is understanding how people use trails. You obviously have a beautiful hard-surface trail and a, and a beautiful bike path, so to speak, that cruises through town. Um, looking at areas of opportunity along those greenways and these green spaces allows the town of Laredo to preserve these green spaces in perpetuity. What is nice about looking across the spectrum of the community in your potential green spaces is that you have opportunity to not only just, it's not just building trail. Um, there might be, you know, vagrant issues that exist in these areas that can be better managed, um, and more suitable for public engagement. We can look at, uh, how the community center engages with these spaces. There's a lot of opportunity in these green spaces in the town of Laredo that, that do present themselves. Um, we've assembled the document, uh, you know, to look at constraints. We've acknowledged some of the, the flooding that's occurred in, in the Shiloh Trail System. We've looked at soil types, um, we've looked at some of the limited green space in town. And when we do acknowledge that funding is a mechanism, uh, that, that does need to be supported in this public space to support these, these endeavors. Uh, but I do want to note this funding aspect, uh, in this space of trails and public recreation, trails are the, one of the least expensive things a city can fund that has one of the most highest impact and greatest rewards that is immediate and effective of its council. So, um, I, I've done this for twenty years and I've helped shape trail systems across the canvas of America. And I can tell you firsthand that if, if it's well-supported, um, you can phase this in over time and it will transform your community, uh, beyond what you can imagine. Um, there's many success stories that have followed the path that we've kind of put forth. Uh, in particular, the Shiloh Trail System, which is, would be, you know, obviously this is relevancy-based. So as we cruise through this document, they are organized in, in relevancy and precedence. So Shiloh Bike Trails is what we would recommend, uh, exercising first, so to speak. And through this trail analysis, we have kind of tried to paint a picture of what is possible in that space. So we've included some imagery that's relevant to Texas topography and terrain, uh, that you could garner with a positive approach in the Shiloh Trail area. Um, a lot of it includes, uh, you know, reorganization of trails, drainage, stabilization. Uh, there is some bank stabilization that's needed, uh, but it would be considered repair and maintenance. It would not be an active FEMA, so to speak. It's mi, it's really just about managing surface hydrology, uh, in this area and lifting the trail, uh, so that, you know, again, it's, it's not just, I mean, obviously the mountain bikers were a big portion of this, um, but as you increase trail quality, you will increase trail, uh, captivity, so to speak. So the, the trails will get more popular and more used and it'll be an amenity, uh, that, that carries the weight in time. So, um, we've tried to organize things very logically in this document. So each zone, including the Shiloh Trail System, um, across the opportunity zones, so to speak, within, uh, these green spaces, they all have cost assumptions associated at a concept level so that you can use these as a guiding document. Um, so that if you're having discussions of precedence and/or funding, um, you can, you can look at these areas that have potential, uh, but know that this document has set somewhat of a precedence of, of, uh, you know, hierarchy, if you will, of most relevant to lesser relevant. Um, any of these upgrades that are conveyed in this document would be good additions to the town and would help an active lifestyle. Um, what we noticed in our line of work is that the multi-use bi-directional single track gets used the most. It is the least costly to maintain, um, but it does not discount how impactful these bike playgrounds can be. Um, so little kids on little bikes like to cruise around. And, uh, mom or dad walking young one in stroller, so to speak, likes to watch the little one while they do their thing and have fun. And these parks embody that approach. So we think about how the trail runner is running, we think about how the, the wee person is cruising around on their little bike, and we think about the opportunity that the adult has to manage all of that and have some tranquility in their life. Uh, we analyzed the, the, um, the, the Chacon Creek Greenway, excuse me, and we looked at areas of opportunity along the Greenway Corridor. If trail density increases in town, in other words, if cycling becomes more popular and people start using these outdoor spaces more, this is an area of opportunity that could depressure the, the potential trail conflicts that do exist. So along this corridor, you'll have essentially, you know, in the future, more mountain bikers per se, or more cyclists traveling to and fro. There's opportunity along this greenway to interact soft-surface trails that can offer a different experience for trail running and so essentially just separating soft-surface users. So, um, it can reduce trail density and trail conflict issues in these corridors. Again, we've taken our best attempt to help guide the council as they make decisions. We have industry pricing in here, these are averages, so we have not cut anyone short in the potential of planning around some of these, uh, estimates. And, you know, this document tries to capture, again, imagery that supports key strategies that, that provide popular experiences. And so, um, if you have any questions, we can, we can always be reached out to. Uh, but we feel that this document really has the opportunity to enhance, you know, the recreational infrastructure in Laredo, um, and the greater community. And so, um, as we work through this document, we just kind of point this out real quick. We were hired to assess and plan, and which is what we've provided. We've provided some, uh, conceptual estimates that are supported by zones with experiences and trail typology. And so the next process or, uh, you know, flow of how this may work would be to design the trails. Um, whether the city chooses Rock Solid or not, most likely due to public procurement policies, uh, we were asked to put together construction documents, um, so to put out for public bid. Uh, and then obviously the trails could be constructed, promoted, maintained, and, uh, we would try to insulate this evolve part. So in other words, as your trails grow and get more increased, uh, usership, we would try to plan from that from the beginning so that there's, you know, little evolution, so to speak. Your trail will be a hit from day one. You know, these are some, some design parameters that we put in here for how we approach, how we as a company or a professional trail building firm should approach, uh, a project such as this. Uh, and essentially, we, we do touch on, uh, maintenance, uh, when we talk about the overall, you know, trail concept conclusion here at the end. Um, and ultimately, it leads into some definitions that support trail typology and difficulty uh, and how these trails can be, uh, interpreted through this document. Um, so again, these are all broken up into a diverse audience. So we take, you know, all the way down from adaptive mountain bikes that are in a hand cycle all the way up to your veteran experienced mountain bike girl, uh, to the one-wheeled enthusiast, the electric one-wheeler or the scooter person. Um, it's a multi-wheeled modality approach. Um, so even though we talk about bikes in this document and we refer to wheeled, uh, sports, we really try to take an inclusive approach up, across the spectrum of all trail users because that is ultimately what makes your trail the most popular thing since sliced bread. Uh, moving down at the bottom, uh, you know, these are just some standard definitions to help understand at a civil level what they are, uh, when they were referred to in this document. Um, but kind of, you know, getting down to the, to the bottom, I'd like to move back over to Tyler because I think this is, um, you know, I think he has additional comments or possible motions to make, uh, based on what we've provided.
Yes, thank you so much for that presentation and thank you for getting through it in a quick, quick manner. Uh, and, and I know this was disseminated to the council just a couple of days ago, so I know it's probably still need to digest everything. But, um, my hope with this, well, first I think we have public comment from, uh, the cycling community, uh, I believe, Mr. Fernando Valdasso, who I should give credit for, and, uh, for, uh, really promoting this Rock Solid, um, to, to, to come down here and, uh, you know, leaned on that, that interest in, in Mr. Neb for supporting it and the council for supporting them. Uh, but I, I believe you might have, uh, you, you signed up for public comments or?
No, I'll see you just reference.
Okay, as the Laredo.
Anybody had any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay. No public comment? And, okay, so if there's no, there's no comment, is any, any, if there's any thoughts from the council? My, my hope was that, um, that this could be forwarded to our, uh, discussion, uh, on Thursday, uh, in, in, in regarding to the bond referendum election. I totaled it all up, uh, you know, it was, so each, each section, you know, the Shiloh Trail section, seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, uh, for all the enhancements they recommended, uh, on the, on the higher end. And then, um, for the Faskin slash Father Magnable, uh, recommendations plus, uh, the Haynes and Chacon Creek. It all totals up to about two-point-five million dollars if everything was, so, um, all, all, of course, wouldn't have to be done at the same time necessarily, but if, if we wanted to consider it for the, the bond referendum, that's, I, I know there's already a big, uh, agenda. But my hope, since we started this last year and we knew the bond referendum was coming, my hope was to coincide it and we're just kind of hitting the deadline, but I was hoping that we could consider it, uh, possibly in the bond. And if not, I mean, it's still a reasonable enough price that we could consider it this coming August in the, in, in our general, uh, fund, CIP. But my hope was, my motion for tonight, uh, was to forward it to Thursday's discussion on our, on our bond referendum to be up for consideration.
If I may add something, uh, in regards to Shiloh Trails. Um, I get asked this, you know, and it's a legitimate question, why now instead of before? And, uh, I thought about this and it's, there has been concerted, uh, development in the area. Uh, my name is Fernando Valdasso, for the record. Um, so because of that development, now there's more water flowing into Shiloh Trails and it has completely damaged the trail. At this rate, I think, uh, in two years, we will not have any trails if we don't work on it. Uh, because there's so much water now flowing into that creek that obviously before there was development, it would be absorbed or evaporated. And, um, when Rock Solid was here, I toured with them and with Parks as well, and about thirty percent of the trail was gone. Just with, uh, in the last heavy rain we had, I think it was like September. So this is, I think, something that we, if possible, we could rush on it, you know, before more damage and it will be costlier to us. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you, go ahead.
Mr. Valdasso, a question to you because I don't visit the Shiloh Trails, I've never been on them before. Does the city of Laredo maintain them? Have they been in there maintaining them?
Yes, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, maintain them. And, um, previous, um, councilmen have added a little bit, you know, we added some shade, some, uh, drinking water. Um, and, uh, but Parks is the one that's been maintaining it. There's some volunteers also who maintain part of it because it's impossible, it's always, it con, it needs constant maintenance, especially after heavy rains.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, they do a great job.
Okay, can I speak to the director, please, Mr. Gomez? Please, would you approach?
Yes, sir.
Coach, uh, Mr. Valdasso stating that the last heavy rain was in September, what type of maintenance have you done since then? And do you see it deteriorating as much as they say that it is?
Uh, good afternoon, Gady Gomez, Parks Director. Uh, councilman, that is correct. We, we, we have challenges there. As you know, Laredo's growing, uh, I think the subdivision there in Monaco is now keeps expanding, the, they're building more townhomes right behind the Variety Meat Market, uh, the, right, right, right behind the townhomes, the Variety Meat Market. So all that drainage goes into the, the Creek Trail. So it gets a lot challenging for our, for our guys, and our guys do a great job when, whenever we can because, you know, like we, you have your, your regular road, but once you start getting into the level We don't, like we, you have your your regular road, but once you start getting into the level twos and the level threes, or it gets a thicker brush. And unfortunately, we don't have that kind of machinery to to be able to to maintain, so little by little it started closing up on us and it's harder to tell it to to take care of it.
So let's just say this gets, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm finished, one more question, um let's just say this gets approved.
Yes, sir.
Would you be able to maintain this?
We we would have to get, we would have to get machinery, with the new type of machinery to be able to handle the. Level twos and the threes and that means because the level ones is it's more open.
You've asked for that already?
No, we have not, we have not asked for that machinery yet.
So you'd have to ask for that on top of getting funding for the project?
That's correct.
So just, just one second. Do, but do we have that machinery and and any other other department that we can use to utilize that?
Uh there's some stuff that we can probably, you know, get together with Public Works, I think we can probably get, but there's fun. There's some specialized uh open up the trails that you can see in other parts. That I don't, I don't think, I haven't checked with our department, but I don't think we have that, so you're talking about. One or two different specialization machinery that would have to need to go in there and uh uh to be able to clean that up to to do it the right way, so.
Yeah, one more question, do you, do you have like, is there a schedule, because I know last time I went to. We had a walk around, I was uh talking to Sigarroa, with Councilor Lisa Sigarroa, he wa- he had a walk around at a. What is it, what was it, uh Slaughter Park? And there was some trees that were trimmed down, some trees that they were just laying over, there were some trees that uh branches. That were, you know, almost falling and that's something that that we got asked. If there was maintenance around it, will we do maintenance, how often do we do maintenance and that's something that. You know, do you have a schedule, Mr. Gomez?
Yes, sir, uh thank, thank you for that, uh so yes, we, it is challenging because we know we have a lot of trails and manpower. We've recently hired another twelve groundskeepers and part of their schedule now is to help us with the parks, with the with the trails, uh Councilman, so. Now we do have a more manpower to to be able to help us with this uh with this trails and hiking bike trails. Uh the Shiloh was a bit more challenging because that's one that has a little bit more dips than go through it all. But as far as as the slaughter, we do it at least, we try to do it at least two to three times a week.
Mr. Mr. Gomez, and and let's say we do, we go, we do go around that route and approve and improving uh this uh. This this the these trails, do you have the, do we have the, are we able to, you know. Maintain, do you have the the capability with the people that you have, the staff that you have, are you going to be able to keep up? And you know, do all the improvements, all the cleaning and all that, that maintenance that it needs? With the staff that you have right now, because if, you know, we're gonna add this and then we're gonna add, but you still have the same. A staff, you know, it's not gonna, not gonna be able to catch up.
Yes, sir, Councilman, to answer your question, I think it comes down to machinery, if we can get the proper machinery. We don't have to come, this is a, I'll chop, you know, start to trim earth, that we can get the actual proper equipment. What five, six people takes us to clean a trail, we can do it with one or two guys with the proper machinery, you know, so. Right now, as you know, we're growing and growing and growing with the trails and all that, so. It's challenging for our guys to go out there with the, you know, with the saws and all that stuff to keep it up. But once you get the proper machinery, it'll take one, two operators just to go in there and just clean or clean out the, clean out the the area.
Let let me add something to what Mr. Angelis is asking, uh once these uh trails are built by this company. That I've seen some of the designs, uh there will be ponds, actually, so now the rainwater will be able to collect it. And use it uh for decoration instead of damaging the trail, now this uh obstacles that we have will turn them into something positive. So the maintenance will not be as challenging as it is right now. That's 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 the objective, is to have it, less, less work on parks and rec.
Yeah, sure, we're we're gonna start directing, redirecting the water, the flow of the water towards uh.
Uh we'll do, we'll, they'll create ponds and we'll create bridges over them, so now they'll be uh they'll be used as decoration. And uh or maybe for other stuff, but uh they will not damage the trails anymore, it will be redirected in a positive way in the the flow. And uh so that parks and for us not to have, you know, any more damage on it, that's that's the objective.
Your question.
Thank you. Um I just wanted to commend uh Councilmember King for. Uh bringing this forward and expanding it out so that we could look at a more holistic approach. And uh Mr. Gomez, when he's talking about interconnecting all of these trail systems, so it's not just a Shiloh Creek. But we have so many beautiful areas that could benefit from this, this um reinvigorated use of trails. And making it attractive to bikes, I really appreciate the fact that this design team was looking at. Um what they call the bicycle playgrounds, but a way in how do you attract more usage? We have right now the Texas Healthy Challenge going on and um hopefully everyone has signed up for that. It's out of our Laredo Public Health Department, but the idea is more activity so we can be a healthier community and this. Proactive approach that looks at a lot of different trail systems all over the city really does. Um speak to that need to get outside and enjoy this beauty that we have. I hope that we don't neglect the river trail system, I know there was some mention, a very small mention in the document. About the existing river trails because right now we do have plans for from Chacon Creek. All the way to um the Sh- the Slaughter Park area and up through um Laredo College. And the idea is to one day connect it to even Father Magnable, um because that leads you to some of the most beautiful areas in our city.
And all the way to the max.
Yes, well, that would be wonderful, but those, there are existing like schematic design all done and incorporating that into. Um what this design team is doing so that we can leverage some of these attempts that we've had before in specific areas. To look at that holistic approach and I hope the department, Mr. Gomez, takes a proactive role. In looking on how to plan for the future, so strategically, we can have all of this connected green space.
Who's next?
Mr. Valdasso, do we know uh how long is the 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 stretch that's being damaged by the water due to the development?
Um last rain, I think, was probably about twenty percent of the trails. Right, right about twenty percent of the trails were damaged, um or insecure, I mean, maybe the trail was there, but it was too dangerous to ride on it. And it also, it it there's clay, so it takes a long time to dry. So it makes it almost impossible to ride for like ten days, it depends on weather.
Mr. Chavez, have we looked at anything that can be done temporary in-house to alleviate this uh these rains or erosion, yeah, the erosion?
Mayor of City Council, we can allow that opportunity to visit the parks and I know there's developments in the area, but they have to maintain their uh. Uh stormwater uh pollution prevention plans and things like that, so uh if you allows that opportunity, we'll look into those issues.
I can, I can just tell you, it's just like unusual rains that we have, you know, when we have like over an inch, this one happens, you know. And then just the system gets overflowed, you know, and and it's because of the expansion of the city and actual development, which is understandable. But uh hopefully, you know, the faster we move with this, uh you know, the faster we approach the system and we lose less trail. And it'll be also less challenging for the constructor to build it.
Well, I'm thinking the fastest way is is maybe uh, you know, look at this in-house for right now and do a temporary fix if it's a a twenty percent of the structure.
Yeah, anything will help, yes, definitely.
Thank you, yes, go ahead.
Uh Mr. Gomez, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Valdasso also, uh I have a question about the grant, didn't we receive a grant for this uh to build out the Shiloh Trails?
The, yes, ma'am, and uh Mr. Tyler can also help, so we did, but it was just a phase. Of the top part of the of the Shiloh Trail, okay, it's just to connect, to connect the Divine Mercy Park to the top. Of the top of the of the actual trail, all right, what we're talking about is more on the interior inside the uh. So the money that we was to connect Springfield into the top of the Shiloh Trails, heading in towards McPherson, is that, is that, is that correct? This is not into the actual uh routes on the very bottom, Councilwoman, uh may I protect that, of the very bottom of the. Of the of the trail, so the grant that we got is just for the top part to could do a hiking bike trail from from the top of the creek.
Go ahead. Elaborate, uh so yes, our uh uh engineering department is currently under design uh for that project. Uh we're designing that trail and and we're coordinating with Texas Parks and Wildlife. Uh we received that grant, uh we're working on uh an environmental assessment, but the plans are are uh have been approved by Texas Parks and Wildlife.
Mayor, follow-up question, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So, so the trail has not had it, you haven't spent any of the grant money, money yet?
No, the design uh was conducted in-house and again, those uh plans have been approved by Texas Parks and Wildlife. And so we're just waiting on on the environmental uh and archaeological to be able to tap into those monies, but the plans are ready.
How do those plans um affect this this plan here, is there, are they in coordination or? And then this one expands out, but this is more of a master plan or conceptual plan. We can still go out for grants for any of this um uh. You know, work that's in this plan as well, I I I briefly looked over it when I received it um on on Monday or yesterday, but. Um it it doesn't seem like it have it broken out in phases. Or am I, am I incorrect, because I didn't see a phase two or a phase one or like how we could, you know, or is this gonna be um. Better done all in, all in one swoop, is this one of those projects?
So uh there is uh within the uh report that we received, so there's uh the three areas that were analyzed. It was focused on the Shiloh Trails, but we do have an assessment done uh by solid uh rock trails. Uh on the Barbara Faskin and and Father Magnable area and also uh on the uh Haynes Rec Center. And the Chacon Creek a- area, so I see this as an opportunity, eh this report that we received. Uh to be able to use this information to not only uh take it to the next step, which would be. Design and construction, but also at the same time allows that opportunity to to perhaps look into some grant opportunities with this report.
Mayor, if I may, just have a follow-up, um I just wanna kind of um, I guess, bring up an issue that um. When I first came into council, I know the previous council member had left. Some motions on the table with the terms of the the trails over there in the La Bota area. And I remember getting a letter saying, you know, that the city wasn't going to pursue those trails. Um I know you all went and looked at those, but the motion for those trails was also kind of on the table. I I'm curious to know why it wasn't, uh those weren't looked at for the study.
Actually, uh if I may, Mayor.
Go ahead.
And I actually wanted them to um look at La Bota, but um it was brought up um. That it's, that La Bota's on private property, so that was uh the reason that they ultimately didn't go. In their short time that they were here, that's why they didn't go there and uh Mr. Ramirez, Tommy Ramirez brought them to um. Josh Blum, who's not on the call right now, because he couldn't make it, Hogan's filling in, uh but uh who was here, Josh, uh he had asked for. Uh locate trails near recreational centers, so Mr. Ramirez brought um. Because, you know, there's also talks about Casablanca, there's also talks about uh other locations that. The city doesn't necessarily have as much control over and since we were, the city was paying for this, parks, you know, felt like it made sense to. Uh and and they agreed, Rock Solid agreed, that it made sense to focus on the areas that we know we can control the the situation and, you know. This is just a start, but um and then so the the pump tracks and the kind of for kids and the the cool stuff they added uh um. Uh near the rec centers uh was kind of a a a bonus uh to the plan and then um. And then just to clarify on, you know, on the on the Texas Parks and Wildlife grant, that was. Two, about two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars that actually gets to go towards, and it's all reimbursable form also. Uh from the, from the state, uh and about sixty thousand that go, that we did is in kind for. Uh manpower, so to speak, um and the two hundred sixty-seven thousand, you know, with parks and engineering, they um. Uh you know, the the way that we got that grant accepted was through a a lot of discussion about making it ADA accessible, so. Um so the the staff felt that getting it approved, because everything, every little design. Had to get approved by the state, there's been lots back and forth, back and forth, uh and the state finally approved. That basically connecting the new Springfield Phase Three uh to McPherson through Shiloh Trails and behind Monaco subdivision and all that. The idea, of course, being that Divine Mercy Park and Shiloh Trails eventually become what is known North Central Park West. Right, and you connect that underneath McPherson and you have this super regional park. Um so that's like the big grand vision, so uh co- connecting all three. Divine Mercy, North Central, Shiloh and making it one big connected park, um so that's. Uh the status of the grant, um looking forward to our local team getting it built out now that the state approved the plans. And then when Rock Solid was here, we made them aware of engineering's plans and then they superimposed. Our local engineers' plans for that part of it into their planning, so they didn't do any double work or anything like that, so.
So, uh Tyler, just a question, so uh this grant can be used to enhance child bike trails, correct? Because that was the purpose when we wrote it and when I wrote the parks and when I sent, they asked me for volunteers. You know, that we've been working to prove to them that we, you know, there's group of people and stuff like that.
Uh I'm sure theoretically, um you know, the the argument from staff has been that. Um that it would be less likely to get approved by the state, um because.
It was approved.
Um the grant was approved, but then the plans have to be approved, um but nonetheless. What what Rock Solid's recommending is costs seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, so the money still, you know, needs to come from uh somewhere, right? Uh to to get some of this big stuff we want done, so um but that's, that's where we are on.
So it's a yes or it's a no?
The the grant, the the plans of, for the grant money, the plans have already been submitted by engineering. Uh to connect Springfield to McPherson through an ADA-approved wa- walk, hiking and walking trail.
Um so it was changed to its original intention?
Well, that, again, there was turnover and uh it was handed off and that's ultimately what staff uh felt like. Could get it approved from by the state, because they were going back and forth, so um so that's a, again, where, I understand the point, um but. That's where, that's where that has landed with with staff and back and forth conversations with the state, so.
Oh, this is a surprise.
Again, that that two hundred sixty thousand would not pay for for the things.
No, but two hundred sixty thousand goes a long way on bike trails right now, you know, as opposed to.
May I?
Go ahead.
Um I just, going, going back to the presentation and and the item at hand. Um I did, I did just wanna comment that I loved the presentation and I think this is a really great, yes, it. Um we need to understand the the funding and where this would come from, but I do think it would be a great exercise in. Um an investment to the city because um initiatives like this really have a a great economic. Economic impact, um it boosts local, the the local economy and businesses, it could bring in tourism revenue. Um it increased property um values and studies have shown that for every dollar that. Uh that invested in in biking infrastructure, there could be a return on investment of four, three, four, five dollars and and. So I think this would be amazing if we could um truly consider funding. The project, but obviously that it's um.
Yes, go ahead. On a water, what was my original question, uh motion?
Oh, sorry, the, my, my motion was just to uh for for to forward this um package to. For consideration in our um in our bond review workshop on Thursday, first coming Thursday.
Motion second, all in favor? Opposed, motion pass. All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you.
All right, before we move on, would like to bring both Section Twelve staff reports. After Section Seven appointments to commissions, boards and committees. Do Section.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Mayor Morgan bring up.
Number seven.
Number seven?
Seven appointments to commissions.
Mayor, on a water, mayor, we've skipped the approval of the minutes.
Oh, yes, go ahead and do, do the minutes. Approval of the minutes for.
December second, twenty twenty-four, December twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass, all right.
Mayor. You had a, uh, you motion to bring up item number uh one twelve.
Yeah, one twelve.
V two and uh item number one oh four also.
Sir, yes, mayor.
Yes, we'll, we'll just go ahead and do this first. All right, so we're pending one twelve.
One twelve, V two, mayor.
V two.
That's, that's, that's my.
Over one twelve, V two.
V two?
V two.
All right. Uh discussion with possible action to request Texas to give an update on up overpass in the city. So the reason I'm, you know, trying to do, I'm, you know, brought this up, uh I had the the privilege and the opportunity to the part of, be part of the MPO. Uh and I wanted to start seeing. Uh, and I wanted to start seeing, you know, showing the community the, the, the progress that, you know, that we're doing with Tech dot. I know they see traffic going on and the, the connectivity that we're doing in, in Laredo. Not only South Laredo, but in North Laredo and West Laredo and East Laredo. So, you know, right now, we're gonna start off with the overpasses in South Laredo, which there's always a conversation. I can, you know, my colleague, uh Mr. Onceales can vouch for that. Having that conversation that we get asked as, as uh almost every other day, you know, when are they gonna do the overpasses or whether they're gonna do the, the changes or how is it that Cuatro Vientos is gonna work on Lomas del Sur, Sierra Vista? So, you know, that's why, you know, we ask for Tech dot just to, to tell, to the community, then ask them where we at with, uh where are we at with that and have uh how soon are we gonna start with the, with the overpasses? Um, uh maybe a starting date and not, not a, an ending date, but a starting date.
Okay. Uh, good evening, uh Mayor, uh council members, uh city leadership. Uh, Jose Rodriguez, I'm the air engineer for the Laredo re office. So today I'm gonna concentrate on the projects that we're doing along uh what we typically know as Loop Twenty or US Fifty Nine and Cuatro Vientos. Uh, I did present some other projects in, in the MPO. I can briefly cover them, but I'll start from the north and then I'll cover the topic in, in.
Let's, let's start the other way around from the south and the north, yep. So I started off from there.
So uh Lomas del Sur project, as I mentioned, uh the MPO, uh that project was let back in November. Uh, the investment for that project is uh fifty, fifty million dollars. Uh, we're still working on, on the contract, uh getting the contract awarded. The successful contractor is Anderson Columbia. So we're projecting to start work uh mid, towards the end of February on that project, seeing some equipment there uh to start that project and the duration of that project is approximately three years. So probably by the, by the end of twenty twenty seven, uh we should be uh seeing uh or we should be nearing completion of that, of that project. Um, going south, uh we are under uh development of authority on Sierra Vista and, and Celito Lindo. So what that means is that the state has uh funding to start the design of those uh overpasses. We still don't have funding for construction. Uh, currently, uh they see it for a letting date in twenty thirty. What the district is doing is working on the plans to have uh these projects on shelf. As funding becomes uh available, we can potentially lead, uh let those projects uh sooner. So Sierra Vista is currently a sixty percent PSNE, what stands for his plans, uh specifications and estimate. Pretty much the plan's ready for a contractor to bid on that project. So we're currently uh at sixty percent of the plans for, for Sierra Vista. Celito Lindo falls a little bit behind, but we are also uh reevaluating that overpass as we're also working on the connection, on the extension of Cuatro Vientos towards the uh International Bridge uh four and five. So uh we're already working on, you know, the possible routes and schematic. Uh, we're evaluating where Celito Lindo is gonna fall in the master plan. So uh that's what, that's the status that we currently have for, for South Laredo.
So right now, are you saying that Lomas, well Celito Lindo doesn't have uh the funds yet? But the, in the planning, you're already at sixty percent of the planning?
On planning, uh we do have development authority for both.
Okay, for both, Sierra Vista and Celito Lindo.
But what delays Celito Lindo a little bit is that we're also working on the expansion towards uh Rio Bravo.
Okay, so uh, good question. So the, with the, with the connection of Lomas del Sur, it's gonna be to have the overpass over Cuatro Vientos road. So the connections is gonna start off, you said uh late February, early March? Or mid February, early March? And then from there, is there any plans that we're gonna connect right across that's gonna go that something that's gonna benefit the South Laredo, which is something that we're very excited. It's uh the sports complex, which if I'm not mistaken, should be done by April, May, uh the, around that area. So is the road gonna continue and do that connection from, from Lomas del Sur, Lomas del Sur connecting all the way to three fifty nine? Do we have an other, another uh connection or is, is that it and, and right now for the overpasses?
That's uh, that's what we're calling the, the outer loop, if I understand.
Sorry?
If I understand incorrectly, is the connection on three fifty nine, I guess, uh and fifty nine?
Yeah.
That's what we typically call the outer loop. Uh, we're also working on uh evaluation of the alignments.
Okay.
We already have some, some alignments uh being proposed by our consultant. Uh, I don't have him here.
That's right.
But uh we were also working on the outer loop, but uh the connection uh towards eighty three continuing Cuatro Vientos over Mangana and eventually connecting South of uh Rio Bravo, uh that's coming sooner than the, than the.
The other one.
Yes, sir.
All right. So can you continue with the, the ones going north?
Yes, sir. So um. Can actually go back. There you go. So uh now on the north side, uh we have approximately six miles of, of construction, ongoing construction. Uh, we're going from uh International Boulevard all the way to uh Jackman. So this project was um awarded to James Construction Group for a total investment of three hundred and forty five million dollars. Uh, war began on last March twenty twenty four. Uh, we have an estimated completion uh on, you know, by the end of the year of twenty twenty nine. So this project has uh includes the construction of four overpasses. And again, I cropped this from, from the schematics or some visual, uh I guess, representation of the, of the overpasses. Uh, the first one is at Jackman, then we have University at the entrance to, to TCU. Uh, then we have Delmore and then the last one will be Shiloh and we're gonna eventually connect the main lanes of International. So um this is a reconstruction to full uh interstate standards. What it means is that we're bringing south. Uh, the footprint that we currently have from I thirty five, McPherson International, we're bringing that footprint uh towards the south. Uh, the only overpass that is pending, uh it's already funded, but we're working and relocating uh some facilities there in, in Loop Twenty is the overpass at the airport. Uh, but again, during this contract, we have uh these, these four uh overpasses.
Go ahead. Thank you, Jose. Uh, you, you were just saying basically you're going here, south to north as far as the overpasses over the next four years, like? Or are you just listing them? Was that a coincidence in how you were listing them or is you're, that's the way it'll be, you know, you, Jackman University, uh Delmar Shop? That's the order they'll be completed or they'll be kind of all completed roughly together along the four years?
Yeah, so the sequence of construction starts from the south, but ultimately uh in order to open the entire facility, all the, all the overpasses need to be constructed. So we uh, we need to finish this, this four uh overpasses within the contract allotted in this contract, so.
So people kinda need to be prepared, cause our job is to, and your job, and I appreciate your, your Facebook pages and updating us all the time. But um people kinda need to be ready to be driving past a fully con- constructed Jackman overpass and not be using it until the next three are done, right?
Yeah.
So just, just kind of mentally preparing for seeing it there and not being able to use it.
Yeah, so typically there's gonna be concurrent work in the overpasses. I'm, I'm just gonna throw an example, right? For example, the, the drill shafts, the foundation for the, for the bridge typically has been done by, by a subcontractor. So what typically happens is that they mobilize that subcontractor at once. So we can expect uh for the bridges to be, you know, following, you know, behind each other. So it, we're not gonna be having large gaps uh from the construction. So we don't typically construct one and then just, you know, uh move to the next one. Uh, we could see uh, you know, sequential construction on both of the four, uh four overpasses. So if uh, because the way we're handling traffic, uh we cannot put one of the overpasses in service. It wouldn't be for, you know, very, very much time.
And last year we were told it's a five-year timeline roughly from twenty four to twenty nine, right?
Yes.
Uh, would you say that we're do, on track?
We're on track, weather permitting. For example, just last, last week, we have uh weather days. Uh, I mean, uh, but yeah, we, we, the contractor is on track.
And when will the more disruptive uh things start happening? Cause this first year was all like utilities. You know, not a lot of the moving around traffic as much. Um, when is, so, so the public can be anticipating this? When, when are those really more disruptive traffic changes gonna start?
So uh, starting uh next, next month, we're gonna start uh seeing some uh night closures on, on Loop Twenty and maybe some shifting, minimum shifting of traffic as we cross some of the major corridors uh across Loop Twenty. And by the end of spring, we're gonna start seeing some pavements on that new right away that, that we acquire. But the major shifts uh will probably be towards the end, the end of the year, probably, I don't know, the fall of, of this year. Where we're actually uh switching uh the main lanes to the newly constructed frontage road. So in the next month, it's gonna be minimum just to cross drainage structures. And then major shifts, uh it will be towards the end of the year and of course, uh we'll be coordinating with, with the city. Uh, we also coordinating with UISD and all the, the stakeholders along the corridor to notify and kind of uh present how these, these switches are gonna occur.
All right.
Thank you. Um, uh, thank you so much for the update. I, I wanted to just touch on it. I know that Tech dot hosted a public forum and asked for input for the realignment or a different alignment of sixty nine. So when fifty nine comes into the city, that will become sixty nine. That's the plan. And how it connects to Loop Twenty, there were some alternatives presented to the public. Has any decision been made about that connector?
Uh, no, we, we met uh just uh recently and, and we, we narrowed down uh the options, uh I guess, to, to three. But uh to my knowledge, we still don't have a, a final decision that we can present.
Okay, so this would, if, if it were to change, then that piece of fifty nine that connects to the city, that would change. Sixty nine would connect to Loop Twenty on a different route.
On a different route, yes, for, for the north. But still, uh we still, that, we still need that connection from South Laredo to the north.
Yeah.
So uh all the investment that, that we're doing, especially with the, the presidential approval of the International Bridge, uh we're still also uh connecting south to north. And, and that is uh being analyzed, a connection now from, I guess, the north part of Laredo towards fifty nine going towards Houston.
Sure.
Thanks.
So Mayor, I can just.
Yes, go ahead.
So you're saying that uh, so did we reach out to uh, have you reached out to uh United, LISD and all those schools? Just to allow them or just to have like a, a conversation with them, let them know that the, how traffic is gonna get from here on, you know, Lomas del Sur, Sierra Vista, especially Lomas del Sur, Sierra Vista, well, or Lomas del Sur, that's a, you know, that's a corridor that a lot of uh, of our buses and a lot of kids, kids go through. Uh, I don't know if we can do that and have a, a like a little town hall meeting, just uh, just to let, have the people out there, uh, you know, let the people come in and have that communication with, with Tech dot along with, with the city and, 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 you know, uh, how we're gonna, you know, go upon that. So if we have that opportunity in management, can we organize, uh have a little town hall meeting? Uh, let's reach out to one of the, whoever has a, an auditorium and see if we can have those, that conversation. Have Tech dot there and ourselves, just let them know what, what's going on in the overpasses.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor and City Council, Councilmember. Yes, of course, uh town halls are, are a good way to put that information out.
Yeah.
So.
Great, thank you.
All right. No, no actually needed, just, it was just a discussion. Do you have a question?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the, I know this item's uh specifically for overpasses. Do we have an update on the concrete medium? That's gonna, the medium that's gonna stretch all through Cuatro Vientos in South uh Laredo?
Uh, it's included in um, yeah, sorry, it's, it's a little laggy. It's included in the, a project for, for Lomas. So with the construction of the, of the overpass in Lomas del Sur, uh we have a concrete uh barrier
Yeah.
that connects all the way to the uh bridge uh over three fifty nine.
And how south is it gonna go?
Uh, just uh, I guess where we merge back the ramps towards, towards existing Cuatro Vientos. And then we're gonna continue that barrier towards uh Sierra Vista. And, and then that footprint is gonna carry further south uh as, as we, of course, are.
So that, that medium will initiate also mid February, the, the barrier?
Um, we haven't had the preconstruction uh with the contractor, but it's gonna get constructed uh within this project.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, it's gonna depend on, on the facing of, of the project, but, but yeah.
And it'll extend all the way to Lomas?
To Lomas del Sur and connects on three fifty nine, yes, sir. So it's gonna cover, I guess, uh the Vijalapa, Vi Ranch and all, all that area, all, all the way to Lomas. So pretty much we're extending the existing uh concrete barrier over uh three, three fifty nine, south towards Lomas.
And then in the future, towards Sierra Vista and then City?
Yeah, as, as we continue, yeah, I don't know, it's uh, it's not allowing me to show, yeah. It's gonna continue further south.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring up uh item one twelve D three. We have a couple of veterans sitting here. They've been waiting for a while now.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you, thank you for that, uh, Councilmember. Um, Mayor, this is a discussion with possible action to adopt a resolution by the City of Laredo supporting House Bill uh number twenty five forty, which was introduced two years ago originally uh by State Representative Rich Raymond, um, which seeks to provide tuition and fee exemptions for siblings uh of veterans who were killed in action, died in service or missing in action, provided that the veteran uh does not have a, a spouse or a child to uh pass that exemption to. Um, which would, this would also further allow us to, the mayor and city council to formally convey this uh during our state legislature ve- uh visit and otherwise. So, and I think, thank you, uh Ricky and member of the veterans from Foreign Wars for being here.
Good, good evening. My name's uh Kalthi Keano. Thank you, Councilmember Ruben Guitierrez, bringing it. And Councilmember Tyler King, uh putting it on the agenda. Real quick, uh it is my understanding that uh some of you are gonna go next week to the state capital to lobby for citizens. And we ask your help. The, the veterans, community, organizations ask your help. One of the, uh we're asking is to advocate and lobby for House Bill. I know it's here, it is House Bill twenty five forty, but it changed since it just got piled uh on January fifteenth. Uh, I gave, just gave the paperwork uh to the city attorney. If you can just pass them out. Uh, it, it has a language on the Hazelwood Act. And what it is, is House Bill eighteen sixty seven now. And the Senate bill also is gonna come up, because I've been talking with uh Judy Saffrinis' office, they also want to file in conjunction with uh Richard Raymond. Hazelwood Act is what it is, is a service member who uh enlists in the state of Texas and comes back to the state of Texas. The higher public education, eh, they're exempt from tuition. Okay? If a service member gets killed overseas uh in Iraq, Afghanistan, or any future wars, uh if I'm married and I have kids, well, if I die, that's fine and dandy. I know my family's gonna get, you know, the benefits. But on August of twenty twenty one, we had a casualty uh here in Laredo. Get released, we also, that's horrible. He did not have a wife, he did not have kids. But when I met his parents and his siblings, he did have siblings. He did have three siblings, brothers and sister. And I started thinking, it's like, his benefits just go away. Why not change the language to add siblings? And that's what Rich Raymond is doing. Changing the language to, if a service member's killed in action, those benefits are gonna be given to the siblings and they won't just go away. And we are asking for your assistance. When you go and lobby and advocate for Laredo, also advocate for this. Because it's not only gonna affect Laredoans, it's gonna affect Webb County residents and the whole state of Texas in a positive. That's all I said. And we also have Ms. O'Ginn here and uh Albert Hearn on this. That's it for me, it's just quick. Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may amend the motion to uh just uh change it to, correct it to the new House Bill eighteen sixty seven now from twenty five forty.
Second, that motion.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just to add, um, I'd like to make a motion for PIO to create a um, an awareness, uh I guess, social media awareness for this and maybe some information on how they can contact our, the representative and let him know that they're also in support, so we can share it and promote it. Um, so it's not just from us as council, but it's also from people in the community, so they can know about it. Just to support the initiative by Dr. King.
We also have Mr. and Mrs. O'Ginn here, parents of David Espinosa. They wanna say some words. It's go start mothers.
Yeah. Elizabeth O'Ginn.
Yeah, Elizabeth Olgin, Tom Hernandez.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for hearing us, um, I would really appreciate if if you all, like Mr. Kehano said, if you all would talk for us, you know, with with this, um, with this House Bill, you know, it it's, uh, I know it's gonna be hard, you know, but it's like, where would this money be coming from, you know, as when my son was enlisted, he, um, he was entitled for his service and, you know, I could ask, like, where did all that money go from? Why not allow the siblings to to use it? Um, I would really appreciate, um, at least to be considerate, to consider it and take it out there for us and and we could be out there too, you know, um, supporting this act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something? Uh, yes, uh.
Name your record, name for the record, please.
Ah, yes, my name's Victor Manuel Dominguez Senior, I'm the stepfather of David Espinoza. Uh, like my wife was saying, uh, one of the questions we had from the beginning is, uh, when when it all happened, of course, we had, uh, Marines that were advising us and helping us through the process, we didn't know what was going on, how to how to approach it, and uh, one of the questions we brought up from the beginning was his G I bill, because that same year, his oldest, his brother after him had just graduated high school, he had a brother who was a junior, another brother was a junior in high school, and a sister who was an eighth grader, so we brought up the G I bill, hoping that somehow, some way, he could use it, and of course, we were told that that was for, he couldn't use it because it was for him, and then there was no benefits or nothing behind it, because as Mr. Kehano said, there was, he wasn't married and it, the benefits would only go to the wife and the children, and since he didn't have, because he was single, there was no benefits at all for him after that, and in a way, we felt bad, because here he is giving his life for the country, and yet he can't do nothing for his own brothers and sisters. So, uh, this this bill, uh, House Bill, uh, eighteen sixty-seven, if it comes to life and it 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 does get approved, it would be a one big benefit for for his brothers and sisters, not only them, but also in the future, because as long as there's conflicts and wars, this this will happen again, and that would be something that would benefit also siblings of other families. So we appreciate everything you guys are doing and hopefully, you know, this this becomes a bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Mayor, I may say a few words?
Yes, uh, Mr.
For the record, uh, my name is Albert Hernandez.
Yes.
And I'm here as a community veteran, uh, in support and requesting, uh, your support, uh, in in lobbying for this particular issue, and I just wanna put it in perspective in what the Texas Hazelwood, uh, exemption does. This exemption, what it does is that for any individual that entered service in the state of Texas and returned to Texas, if they served more than a hundred and eighty-one days of active duty and they received an honorable discharge or a general discharge under honorable condition, conditions, they're eligible to use this particular exemption that waives, uh, approximately about, uh, eighty-five to ninety percent of tuition and fees in Texas public colleges and universities. So while the G I bill is a separate bill at the federal level, this is an extra benefit through the state of Texas, taking care of its Texas, uh, troops, those that basically serve, uh, our nation and came back to the state of Texas. And just to put it in perspective, what it does is that currently, an individual veteran that that, uh, meets all the criteria, after they've used their G I bill, the state of Texas then basically is telling public institutions in in higher ed, we're waiving the majority of that tuition, making, uh, continual, uh, higher ed education, somebody wants to go beyond, uh, a bachelor's degree or even into, uh, graduate or postgraduate degree, they can do this. What it does is that currently, the Hazelwood Act, if I decide not to use it, the state of Texas several years back, they introduced a Texas Wood, uh, legacy, allowing a veteran to transfer those benefits over to their children between the ages of eighteen to twenty-five. An individual veteran, whether while in service or after service, their service connected to a hundred percent service-connected disability, then they're entitled to get those benefits, not only them, but now the state of Texas allows them to expand that to their spouse and to their children. For individuals that passed, as it was stated earlier, while in service, if they have no dependents, meaning that the service member was not married and did not have children, for lack of a better word, that benefit dies with them. And what we're asking is to lobby across the state of Texas, and we're thankful for, uh, our representatives are are taking this to the Texas Hill, but in addition to that is that this exemption, yeah, also probably, just to put it a little bit more in perspective, a veteran that is a grandfather or a, uh, uncle of one of, uh, their their, uh, nieces or their their grandchildren, the state of Texas allows an IRS dependent to use this benefit. So there's already an, uh, a process to expand that benefit to other immediate service, uh, I'm sorry, for other immediate family members, and all that we're asking at this point, in in your support of up in the the Texas legislature, is for the the policy to now be extended to include siblings, particularly those that passed while serving their country. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointments to commissions, boards, and committees, number one through fourteen.
Motion second, on the favor?
Aye.
Motion, and?
Motion to bring up item one oh four.
Motion?
Staff report.
Second, on the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Honorable Mayor, uh, and Council, Jesus' sponsor with the Budget Department, uh, will be, uh, will be presenting a budget refund recap for the council.
We're missing one.
The recap that I'm gonna cover, Mayor, Mayor, is, uh, part of the Friday, a packet presentation that was sent to council last Friday, uh, in there had a booklet similar to this, in there it had all the, uh, presentations from the committees, uh, some analysis, and part of this, uh, press, uh, screens that I have in here are tied into this, uh, bigger report that was sent out on Friday, on the Friday packet. First of all, I wanna take a minute to thank the committee members, uh, this slide shows the bond referendum committee members, uh, we had the four categories, the public safety, public infrastructure, health and wellness, and the enhancement services, and it has all the members that serve, uh, we had multiple meetings, uh, listed in here on the top were the the chairs of all those committees and all the members of committee that that worked, uh, throughout different months. And I believe we do have a couple of members that are present today, uh, if there's any members that were in the committees, if you please kinda stand up and thank you all for your your work.
Yeah.
Uh, that you all with with the bond referendum committees.
Before, before we continue the presentation, I'd like to just backtrack a little bit on a public comment on Fernando Basaldua.
Bataso. He's on this item, as a matter of fact.
On this item, one oh four.
Sure, Bataso. Before we continue, sir.
Can we turn this on here? Okay, um, thank you, uh, for the time, uh, I was honored to be on the committee, on the board committee, uh, thank you for your trust, Ms. Perez, and, uh, I learned a lot, you know, and, uh, I did a lot of research as well in why we need this and, um, the money that we're spending, and I came to realize that other cities, bigger in population, have a lower budget than us. So I decided to bring all this information to council to make you aware, uh, where we're at before we make, uh, recommendations, and maybe we need to look at this before we go for bond, maybe we can delay it, you know, for next year, while we look at this information. Um, you know, Texas government, our governor, Texas legislature, Mr. Raymond, they're all working on bringing our taxes lower, our property taxes lower, and, uh, so this kind of was against it. So, uh, our, I think our budget for next year, or this fiscal year, is about a billion dollars, you know, according to Laredo Morning Times, and a city like Arlington that has the Cowboys, has Six Flags, has Texas Rangers, and has about thirty percent more population, it has three hundred ninety-eight thousand people, has a budget for this year of, uh, seven hundred and twenty-two million, thirty-five percent less for a city that's thirty percent bigger. So, uh, maybe we, there's something they're doing right, or maybe there's something we're not doing, uh, I think, you know, this is reason enough to maybe look into this information before we proceed into getting more money, because I think, uh, the money is here, I mean, uh, our budget is big, you know, we have about a billion dollars, and before we ask taxpayers for more money, I think we have to we, look at ways to cut down the fat, cut down, or we need to cut down to see, you know, how can this city, which is bigger and has, uh, better quality of life, you know, coming to professional teams and parks, spend less a year than us? Just wanted to make you aware of this information, and maybe by looking at this, we can delay the grant, hopefully, like, I mean, the, what's it called, the bond, a year, while we look into this first, before we ask citizens for more money. Okay? And, uh, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask, you know, to, to unrelated topic, but I was not aware, Mr. King, that the grant had shifted, because everything that I wrote was for Shigeru Fels.
All right, yeah, this is a tough topic we can, we can deal with.
Just to be clear, I did email that to him last year, I can show everybody, but anyway.
All right, okay, we'll deal with it. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, please continue.
This slide shows the, uh, we initiated the, uh, committee meetings on September thirty with a kickoff meeting with all the committee members, uh, in this meeting, uh, there was a presentation by Mr. Nepp as to what the committee's, uh, duties, responsibilities were gonna be. During the month of October to November, uh, and December, the four committees met, uh, numerous times and had presentations from the staff and other, uh, parties that had projects related to, um, the bond referendum. Keep in mind that the bond referendum is looking at tax, tax, uh, a tax rate, and it's looking at the property, property, uh, tax rate. So most of the projects that are in there are gonna be tax-supported. So October, November, the enhancement services meeting, uh, met between October ten through November twenty-sixth, the public safety, uh, committee had meetings from October seven through November sixth, the health and wellness, uh, committee met from October seventeen through December nine, and the public infrastructure meetings were from October ten through December twenty-four. The main committee had three meetings, uh, the first was a public, uh, and they they met November through December. The first was the public safety, uh, police and fire, uh, committee that presented to the committee, and then the, uh, subsequent second meeting was the enhancement health community development, uh, of presentations. Uh, then we had one more recap in January, which was a recap for what the main committee was gonna submit to council, which is what we have in our next slide here. Any, any questions so far? So here is the by category and departments, and the subcommittee, which is the middle column, is what they submitted to the main committee for their review. Public safety fires had ninety-eight point six million worth of projects, public safety police department had two hundred and sixty-one point nine million of projects, health and wellness health department had seventy million worth of projects, community development, which is on our health and wellness, uh, category as well, uh, had a ten million dollar project, and that's mainly for the Hamilton. The public infrastructure, uh, public works paving program, subcommittee did not have a proposal. The enhancement services parks and recreation had ninety-two point nine million. Total recommendation from the subcommittee to the main committee were five hundred and thirty-three million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and nine. As the main committee met, most of the amounts that were presented from the subcommittee got approved. Fire was ninety-eight point six, public, uh, police, two hundred and sixty-one, health to seventy, uh, the only one that had a different amount was the, uh, parks and rec, which came in at seventy-seven million, nine hundred, and the main project in there was the water park, was not recommended by the, uh, main committee to move forward to the council's review. Then as we reviewed this, we, uh, city administration met and analyzed some of these numbers, and there were some recommendations from the, uh, city administration staff. The fire recommendation was ninety-eight point six, police was, uh, reduced to one seventy-six point eight million, and this was done by conversation with the, uh, police department as to prioritizing, uh, their request. Health remained at seventy, community development, ten million, and one of the projects that staff, uh, felt strongly that is a need for the city of Laredo was our paving program. Our paving program, uh, recommendation that we have is a hundred and twenty million. Parks and recs has forty-six million, two hundred. The total for the city administration is four hundred and twenty-one million, seven hundred and ten, four hundred and fifty-five. I do wanna point out that in the parks and recs, the difference between the seventy-seven nine hundred and the forty-six are two rec centers that are not in the city administration. Partially, part, the part of the reason for that is that there is the M and O impact for those, uh, all of them have an M and O impact, and I have a, a, a slide as we move forward, trying to estimate what the M and O impact is, because one thing, this is the 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 projects to build or execute those projects, then we have an M and O component that comes into the general fund, that's gonna have an impact as we move through the next five years. So the, one of the reasons also was because of that, we wanted to have the council consider that M and O in the consideration of those two, uh, recreation centers. One was in District Six and the other one is in District Eight. There was a misprint on the packet on Friday, it just showed one in District Six, but we're talking about two rec centers, uh, fifteen million each was the estimate that we got, and that's what is missing on that difference between the seventy-seven nine hundred and that, uh, forty-six. Um, any questions so far? Next slide, impact analysis. So what we're, what we're showing in this slide, starting from the left, is a penny. The penny impact would generate about two point four million dollars of revenues from property taxes. This would finance approximately forty million dollars of bonding, and, uh, either through any different, or any kind of financing mechanism to include bonds or a- any, uh, any monies from the Tech Start or any other places. So to the right, we have a ten, thirteen cent, fifteen cent, and twenty cent increase as a analysis of what that impact would do. Ten cents would generate approximately twenty-four point seven million dollars in revenues, which could have, uh, bonding capacity of four hun- about approximately four hundred million. There's a lot of factors that come in here, so these are approximate numbers, interest rate, uh, and and that have an impact on that.
May I have a question?
Yes, go ahead.
For what amount of time are these bonds being proposed?
Typically, typically anywhere from twenty to thirty years.
For its, in its entirety?
Yes.
So you're talking about vehicles that we're gonna be financing for twenty- So you're talking about vehicles that we're gonna be financing for twenty to thirty years?
Uh, clarification on the vehicles, what happens on the bonding when our, our, uh, financial advisors, uh, put that together? Is they have different components of the financing. So we have the vehicles, we have things that are fifteen year life capacity, twenty years, thirty years. So imagine you have five loans within that main, uh, bond issuance. So the, the payment is a total amount, but it gets amortized or paid over the life of those assets that we're bonding for. So we pay off the cars first and then anything that's ten years and fifteen years, twenty years and, and so on. And the reason I'm saying twenty to thirty years also is because some of the items here are buildings.
Sure. And I understand that, but I just want the public to know that we're not financing vehicles for twenty to thirty years. I wanna make sure that's very clear.
So I see that public safety fire came up from ninety-eight, one, uh, fire didn't come down at all. But public safety police did. So is there a reason that, that we went from two sixty-one or, yeah, two sixty-one to one seventy-six? Is that, uh, what, what did, what did, uh, we remove or was it the cars, Mr., you know, management? Chief, can you answer that for me or?
I think what, what got approved in the one seventy-six and it were conversations with, with the chief. As we prioritize the two sixty-one, uh, as to what items were the most important items for him and, and I'll let him speak for, for him in that.
Yeah.
So the one seventy-six represents mainly, I think it was the admin building, the training facility, and I think the vehicles.
Okay, let me, let me hear from the, let's hear from the chief.
Good evening, council, Chief Rodriguez, uh, Chief of Police. Yes, uh, the, the conversation with management was, what was our priority and what was, uh, the, so what is the main priority, chief? So definitely the headquarters, uh, we definitely don't fit in, in the headquarters that we're currently in. And of course, our training facility, which we continue to say that we're, as of right now, we're still training at San Martín de Porres and other facilities that are not the city. Uh, because we do not, we do not have, uh, a training facility.
So chief, what did the committee say when you presented this, this information to them? What did, you know, what was it?
Uh, they were gi- they were given the, uh, the information, they were given the tour of the police department, they were giving the tour of our current training facilities. They were also given the, uh, given a visibility as to how our current status is with our, uh, training equipment, our vehicles and things like that. And, uh, all the committee agreed that it is a need. But I, and we're very much aware that we also have to, you know, and in times like this where we have to meet halfway. Uh, to make sure that we get to everything in those bond referendums that we're putting out, that we are gonna prioritize, right? So if we're asking, if we're asking the police department, what are we gonna prioritize? It's gonna be the headquarters, the training facility, and of course, our vehicles, which are crucial to our operations.
So let's say that, well, let, let me, Mr. Spazza, let's say that we pass this bond or we, whatever we, uh, we request of the amount we get there. Let's say it doesn't, it doesn't pass, what happens to the vehicles? Are we able to get more vehicles or is it something that the bond doesn't pass and the vehicles are included? We can't get vehicles anymore?
Yeah, I'm gonna let our bond counsel answer that question, uh.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council members for the record, my name's Jake Juárez, I'm an attorney with McCall, Parker, and Horton. Have the privilege of serving as your guys' bond counsel. Also here are Rick Manabides and Mario Perez, they're co-bond counsel. Uh, so to answer your question, yes, if any of these measures are turned down by the voters, y'all cannot issue COs for them like y'all are used to financing things. There are other financing tools, one of which is a tax note, which has a seven-year max amortization schedule, so you can still finance vehicles and stuff like that. But if they were to turn down the buildings and stuff like that, y'all are kinda stuck not doing those for at least three years. Legislation has been proposed that might extend that to five years.
So let's say, so you're saying that we passed this one seventy-six and let's say it doesn't pass, that's including the cars, the vehicles, am I correct? Uh, let's say we pass the vehicles and we don't get, so there's not gonna be units that end alive for a vehicle, the, that you.
Five years.
Uh, Chief Rodriguez, for the record, and I, I had this conversation with our, our budget director and management that. Our vehicles is, is crucial to our operation, daily operations. So this is a conversation that continues because, uh, we do get a little bit nervous if this doesn't pass, how are we gonna get vehicles? And I can tell you, uh, that this coming year, uh, the minimum that is gonna be required, uh, vehicles that are, that are gonna go end of life this year are eighty-five.
So why, you know, administration, why add the vehicles that we know that if, let's say, anything happened and, you know, mid. When it comes, when it comes to elections and bond referendum, things could happen. And let's say that the people don't, you know, they're going for this because it's too high.
Mayor, yeah, mayor and city council, let me, let me have, Jay, don't go anywhere. Uh, let me have bond counsel take it a little bit farther, because one of the things that you'll, you'll, you'll find out is how we frame the question as to what it is. It has to be specific enough on what the projects are, but what I would state is make it broad enough where we have the, the, if there's any room to be wiggled on that. The challenge we have with our vehicles in the police department, uh, is that we're not replacing them fast enough. Because there, the, the cost, it, it's incremental within our structure, we have a lot of other needs as well, too. The whole idea about the bond, the bond referendum was to give us that kickstart over the top again with that. But, but in my understanding is that, uh, if it is, if, if the bond question is specific enough. That's going to eliminate the, the three-year window with that, within that structure. And I think that's where I've been challenging the bond counsel to write the question in a way that doesn't close that door completely.
How, how would we write that question?
You see what I'm saying though, Jay?
I see what you're saying and sometimes we can narrowly kind of tailor and wordsmith the language. I think here, it would be way too long, we're propositioning it put in front of the voters, uh, and AG is being very, very difficult these days.
So the, where, where we're at right now is really for the mayor and the city council to determine what we're trying to draft and craft. I mean, I, I think that's where, that's where we're, we're kinda, it's chicken and egg to a certain extent with this.
Yeah, I, I provided a draft election ordinance, I don't know if that was printed for you guys. Uh, if not, I can get that in front of you guys, so you can start looking at that. A lot of this language is pretty boilerplate, we try to be, you know, uh, broad enough to capture all of your potential projects. And we try to be clear enough so that the voters don't get confused, because if the proposition doesn't get wordy or confusing, the AG will give us an issue.
But I would also say that if, if we are not able to fund, like the vehicles, and if, if the question wasn't broad enough and it was voted down. That just means we can't go out for a bond referendum for the vehicles. We can utilize other sources of funding in order to purchase vehicles, we just can't do it within, within a bond referendum structure.
You can't do it within a bond referendum, you can't do it with certificates of obligation as you all used to do, but there are tax notes for the vehicles, so you all do have other options, yes sir.
So, uh, what, our whole strategy within this thing was keep with the traditional method of how all the, all of our other sister cities operate through that. Uh, the school districts and everything else as well, too. And then as you've made your decision as a council, what is the priority and where you're wanting to go. Then we would look at these other things in future conversations, saying this is how we're gonna have to deal with this issue from that point. Because we're, we're not gonna go after the bond refer- referendum question for that, if that helps.
Mayor, ma- ma'am?
Go ahead.
Um, so I imagine we'll go into more detail on Thursday's meeting, is, is that?
I, it would, it, that was the hope was that is to really, uh, present it out here, get, get some of this information in your hands. Because there are, um, there are paths to take within this conversation. And when we start going down one path, then there's a whole series of, of pieces that we have to talk about.
Because it, it just from your original, when you came up, your original statement. It sounds as if perhaps the vehicles, we could find other ways to fund them. But the incredibly needed headquarters would be a completely different kettle of fish. And maybe at the bond meeting that we'll have on Thursday, we can talk about forecasting, what that would look like and what alternatives would be available. Because I think we need to be made fully aware, we've got some serious needs out there. And, um, what are all the alternatives that we have?
And, and, and mayor and city council, you know, one of the questions, I think it's in the presentation, if it's not there, is, is actually, and I put it in the email when we were talking about how, where we were at within the process. It is also, uh, what questions we ask of our, of our citizenry as to what they're going to do. You know, you can lump it together in one, one question, one bond, you can add, you separate them out into six different levels, you can follow the four categories here. You can do it a lot of different ways. And so the idea was to, I, I, I think when we were talking about it, it's more of a cafeteria type style, saying public safety, public works. Uh, en- enrichment services and such, because, uh, something different for all of our citizenry. Uh, we've, we've not done this, I, I know council member Garza has, has dealt with a lot at, in the school districts and everything. But we haven't went out to our public this way. Uh, but I think that's where, uh, we need to, we need to show them of what those needs are. And I think that's what's been the best thing about this group, so. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Um, I just, I know, like, it's, it's been almost six, eight months or more since we got this process started. But so much of it was in the hands of the, of the bond commission, uh, at committee, which was, which was great. Uh, and then we had some local crises that of course happened, um, along the way. And thi- this council, you know, we, I'm, I'm sure we've been communicating with our appointees. But I just wanna like, set, re- remind everyone or refresh, set the table, like. The reason why this type of thing is, like, for example, San Antonio does a bond referendum election every five years. They just, Dallas just hit a one point four billion one last year. Of course, we're not gonna go that big, cause we're not a- as, as large as Dallas. Houston has one every five years in, in the billions of dollars. So the, the point, the reason why cities have to do that in Texas is because the state legislature lowered the, the cap on property taxes. Uh, uh, that, that we can, that we can get. So in the past, it was six, seven percent increases, uh, per year. And then just a few years ago, uh, there was a battle about it and it was gonna be five percent. And then it got voted down and then the next session, they came back and brought it down to three percent. Um, so that's why cities have to do this, uh, across Texas uniquely, because, uh, because of that cap. Which is, in a way, it's great, because it makes sure that it forces cities to be financially responsible and makes them not increase taxes, uh, too much. And anytime there are some needs or wants, wants for the community, you go to the voters and say, okay. Maybe we can't get this in our ti- in our standard consolidated budget in August. Here, we think this is something you might be interested in having, it's your choice, constituents, voters, taxpayers. So I just wanna remind everybody, like, this is what all the other cities in Texas are doing, we haven't done this. And, um, and you know, when, I, I just get so frustrated when we compare ourselves to other cities, like, why can't we be like McAllen? Oh, well, how did McAllen get their amazing convention center, their sixty thousand square foot convention center? It was through this process, it was through a bond referendum election, that's how they got it. So it's frustrating when we say, well, why can't we be like them, but we're not willing to do what they're doing? So, um, I just wanna remind everybody that that is the method of getting some of these extras done in the state of Texas. Due to what the state has put cities in, has a good thing, you know, lowers, make sure we stay responsible. If we want extra things, we have to ask the voters, so I just wanna remind everybody, that's where we're at.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I was a liaison for the public safety, uh, group. And talking to both chiefs and, and spending time with both departments. The, the vehicles were very, very necessary for, for these departments to function, so that they could respond to the emergency calls out there. So when we discussed putting the vehicles forward to the voters, we knew that that was a, a high priority, but it's like rolling the dice. And so the question became, should they even be on this? Because if they don't pass, then what happens to the vehicles? Because they're just gonna get further and further behind. And so in talking to bond counsel, the tax note option is still there. And so ultimately, the vehicles will still be pursued by us, because we have to do it. In order for the departments to function properly. So, um, it was my recommendation to the city manager, to the committee, that we continue to present the vehicles forward. Because of the public, the public knows that if they want a fire truck in front of their house, an ambulance, a police car, they gotta support at least that part of the bond. And if they don't, well, then we'll go to the tax notes. So there's a way to fall back, there's plan B of Mr. Nepp, they said, for the vehicles.
So, so are you saying, are you saying, I'm sorry, may I, I'm just. So are you saying that it's, it's either the tax note or the bond referen- the bond referendum?
If, if it goes forward, mayor, council member as an item to be voted for this bond and, and.
But we're still, but we're still rolling the dice.
Yeah, well, yeah, they'll vote it down, but then the mechanism of bond counsel will go for the vehicles under a tax note. So there's a plan B, so the, the vehicles don't get shut down. That's why you move forward with plan A.
But the bond, the bond is the better way to do it if we can't do it. It's the more stable way of the process, the tax notes will have an impact on us in the longer term as well, too.
Generally speaking, to overly simplify things, if it's equipment or vehicles, there's gonna be an alternative option to finance it. If we're talking about real property and buildings and streets, uh, there aren't other financing options for this.
And, and saying that, mayor and council, if it gets voted down for any reason. We still have an option for the most critical things, which are the vehicles to get to the incidents. As far as the buildings are concerned, you know, the fire stations, the training facility, the police headquarters, if they get voted down, we just have to wait. But the priority of the vehicles, we have an option.
But what would we wanna do, we have the best opportunity to get this bond referendum passed. So let's say that we have the one hundred and seventy-six million, how, how much would it go down? If we, is that including the vehicles?
Yes.
So do we have, okay. So how much is it for, do you have the number for the vehicle, like broken down for the vehicles?
It's in the next slide, chief, click it. So you'll probably a couple of slides down.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, well, actually a question, um, in the, in the booklet that we were given on the presentations. Um, there's a, the recommended list by city administration is, it doesn't reflect in our packet what was taken out. It, the packet is all the proposed, so it's, I think it would be beneficial for us to see what was removed and what was recommended. And then also at, at the same time, if we could also get a little bit of, I guess, more information on, like in the fire. Some of the info on, um, like the stations and like, um, I think also the, the PD headquarters. I had, I had a question about that one, too. Um, cause right now, you know, you all have outgrown your space, mayor, if I may, just continue. Um, I know PD has outgrown their space and we had that discussion about, you know, not owning the, the land and all of that. But I had a question for management, um, since the land is owned by us anyways, by airport. Is there a way for, for us to release that property under TA or TSA guideline or FAA guidelines? Federal guideline, is there a way for us to get that building removed from their oversight? So that it could become police and then we could just grow from like how they had wanted to do before with, with the, with the annex area? Like it grow in some of that land that where it already is? Because if they vacate, then that building will become vacant and then, you know, it's a high cost for them to relocate. But, um, I mean, they're just wanna, they just need more space.
Mayor, mayor, city council, let me ask, answer the question on the FAA and, and the property ownership and everything. Of course, we own the property, but it is governed through the FAA because it is considered airport property, that's what we're talking about here. We have an obligation that, uh, we have to keep the airport whole. So we can release the property to us, essentially, we're gonna purchase the property from ourselves. Keep the airport whole, but then we, we eliminate the lease payment for that. We've sold property out there that's out, outside of the fence area, essentially, over the years, you, I can show you the history with that. Uh, but we, we have an obligation because of the federal, uh, protections with the, within the FAA. We have to protect the airport and that property is essentially funding the airport in some way, shape or form.
Mayor, funding?
My argument is that we have, we have guarantees within our, our whole structure for, we guarantee that that airport will be sustainable.
Right, and that's the only problem, that regardless whether we take the land back or not, we still need to continue funding the airport.
Correct.
Those thirty thousand dollars that we pay for monthly on the lease needs to be done regardless, whether LPD's in the building or they're not in the building.
We, we have to, we have to, we have to satisfy that requirement within the FAA and that's the, that's the method of how you walk through it.
Exactly, so whether we take it back or we don't take it back, we need to continue funding them, those thirty thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have a follow-up, I was gonna follow up on the question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I guess, is there a way to relieve PD from the burden of having to pay that, that fee that they were, like? It's cause we're taking it out of PD's budget and, and now we're gonna be building like a, excuse me, my voice is cracking. Uh, yeah, I'm good. It, um, we're gonna be funding, um, a new. It, um, we're gonna be funding a, a new building somewhere else. We're still gonna have these other costs. So it's, I don't know if there's a way to figure out another kind of structure to still expand where they're at and they can meet all of the needs that they have where they're at. And if, and then if that would be good enough to bring this cost down.
And, and mayor city council, it, it's, it's just calling it something different really for what it is. Because the police department is in the general fund. And so it's covered by property taxes, sale tax and, and all the, the bridge funds that go into the general fund. If we were to remove it out of the police department budget, because budgets are to track the expenses associated with the service. So if we remove it out of there, we're still gonna pay for it, right? But we're gonna pay for it in some other form or fashion. It's still gonna be general fund money. It'll still have the same impact on that. It just won't, we would, we would, I, we could call it facilities, maintenance or whatever if you would like. But I think the impact, the same, it's a, it's two and a half cents one way, nickel and a half the other. Because it's, it's the same numbers really at the end of the day. I think that's been the challenge that we've had with, with, with the, the general fund services that we provide for that. There are other ways to take the entire service out of the general fund because there is no requirement in state law as to what gets paid for by the general fund.
And to, and just if I may, Mr. Ned, I, I think the, that was one of the conversations with the committee. And so when you really look at the whole picture as to what we're doing with our rent at headquarters, we're paying about 30, $32,000 a month, right? So it's a 65,000 square foot building, really. We're paying very low rent. If you, if you multiply what the market rate is at, about maybe 250, 275 dollars, two, two, two dollars and 75 cents a square foot, really, we, we can get another person to lease that building, another department, other, another entity to release that building and really get fair market, you know, rent from it. But for us, right now, we just don't fit. And so even if we go out and buy the land and add an annex and do all these other things, you know, we're still gonna hit, you know, we're still gonna have to go to a bond referendum to do all that and make sure that we have a complete, you know, headquarters that, that fits our, our needs. So I think we just, we did have this conversation and we had the conversation about also going into maybe a space of like Mother Norte, where there was the old Sears building, right? We looked at that, management gave me the green light to look at that. And I think the, the, the problem with those locations is that it cannot be secured and we cannot be just compliant. There's Eastmans that we have to give them access to. There's no way we can secure the parking lot. There's a lot of things that go into play with those buildings. So we, we kind of shy away from those. So I think at the end of the day, this is, this is the direction that I would recommend we go with a new building. Do everything from brand new and let it stand there for the next 40, 50 years so that we don't have to come back and ask our community to fund again the police department.
Mayor, may I be recognized? All right, so let's say we go, you know, I understand that you need the, the new building, chief. But is there, do we, do you have an, another option saying that you have a training, do you want a training center? But you already have, we already, you share a training center with, with fire. Is there a way, you know?
We don't.
Okay, is there any way we can do, can we, we can do that? And if there's a way we can fund it, you know, fund that trainers, training center a way that'd be suitable for you and, and for your training? And, you know, is there any way that you, can you bring those numbers, say, you know what, we can do this? Or that, go to that center yet? Because it's, how many acres there?
So there's multiple acreage at fire?
260?
265 acres?
Yes.
So is, there's a possibility that we can, you know, maybe do something, just add some more money instead of this whole budget of, of adding, you know, buying a new training facility or buying land, which are, utilize the land we already have and share it the way, you know, as, you know, as, as the family guys are, you know, public safety.
Mr. Mayor, if I may address that.
All right.
That facility was, it, it was named after both departments. PD actually put in money to help build that facility. And I was assigned out there when I was a district chief back in 2003, 2004. This is one of the training chiefs. And the facility isn't booked all, all the time. There's three training rooms available. It is a drive out there, so that's the inconvenience.
And I understand that, chief. But what I'm saying, can we work on it? Can we do something, you know, is there anything that we can come up with to make it, you know, more suitable to your standards? Or what are you looking for, for the training that you're looking for, Mr. Chief?
So, so, so councilman Rahel, I, I think, you know, we can, we can do anything if we want to, right? We can make it happen if we want to. What was put forth here is what, talking to command, best practices is what we were recommending, right? One of the things that we have challenges with when we're talking about Mines Road area is the fact that PD does trainings almost every day. And so it's a challenge for us to release our, our, our officers all the way to Mines Road just by going to headquarters and going to Mines Road. That's about a 45 minute to close to an hour drive. And then getting out of there for lunch and then releasing them. It becomes a burden going all the way out there, especially with the traffic. And then here comes, you know, the five o'clock traffic. So things like that we'll look into also, the other thing that we'll look into. How are we gonna enter, when are we gonna do our exercises? Going through, again, through the property that is currently accessed by fire department. So disrupting that part of the training, you know, is just for us, it's not really feasible. We, we're looking at it, but again, we can make it happen.
Yeah. And the only reason I'm bringing it up, chief, is because I think it's, I think we're, we're looking for the best opportunity to pass this referendum and to break, to bring the, the, that number down. You know, to use, utilize as much money as we can. You know, if we bring something, let's say, let's say right now we're at 176. We go to, you know, 75 just for the building. Or maybe, I'm just saying, I'm just throwing numbers out there. And they're gonna be like, you know what, it's, it's a building that we need and something that, you know, they, they are growing that building they have. So let's, yes, let's, let's build a bi, a bigger police station. But, you know, it gives you a bigger, I, I'm just looking to get a better opportunity for the community. I like, like, like the, the other day I heard, as a taxpayer, as, you know, being a taxpayer, you know, as a, as a councilman, at the same time, you know, I'm seeing, you know, this is the best opportunity not to spend as much, but to utilize everything we got.
Yeah, and, and the, the 261 that you see here, a lot of the things that, that we were, we said that not to prioritize is because we're pretty much using other funds to sustain, to be able to go to another bond referendum. And what I'm talking about here is also our body cam system. You know, sitting down with management, we were able now to find a way to fund them now. Because right now, we're in a critical situation where we don't have the body cams that are needed. Yeah, we're in the working conditions that, that we need. So right now, we're moving forward just in that with the current budget that we currently have. We're in, in talks right now. So we removed the $32 million that it takes to sustain that. Because it's a subscription as service. We no longer own the equipment. Everything is paid, you know, on a yearly basis. So that $32 million was removed. The tactical equipment, all that stuff that we put input in here, we removed it. We can weigh because we can right now purchase some of the much needed equipment through trust fund money. So all those things we removed already, we shaved a lot of it. And so this is just the critical needs. And we're gonna put it to the public and we can very well justify this need to the public. We can go to town hall meetings and show them exactly why we're asking for this.
So I, I, I think the discussion here kind of shows, we have a, a hard deadline of February 15th? 14th? And here we are at the end of January and we're still talking about making decisions for the final product. And perhaps on Thursday, it will all come to pass. And our questions can be satisfied and we can have this really amazing plan that we can clearly communicate to the voters. Because if we can't clearly communicate the money that we're asking for and what it will pay for, I think the chances of it passing decrease dramatically. But there is another option. We could wait till November so that we could finalize these plans and then really do that outreach to our community so they understand and are willing to get on board. And I don't mean to say that ahead of time. I'm just saying that if on Thursday we come back and we haven't satisfied some of these really basic questions, then maybe we just need to entertain the idea that this is something that should wait for November.
With the, at the rate the city is, is growing, it's to expand, right? You wouldn't vacate where you're currently at.
We will vacate. That's our main headquarters, yes. And so right now, we also shaved off from this ask, the, the central sector bureau, which is what we're doing in south, in the, in the South Laredo area. What we're doing next to the One Vista Park, we're gonna do it in Central Laredo. We're also gonna do one in North Laredo, right? And what that is, it's a command where people can just go walk in and then everybody reports, everybody that's assigned to that command reports there and has a complete structure, a, a, a complete police structure, a captain, lieutenant and their sergeants and the patrolmen. So all that was shaved off. We can go out for the, the same bonds later in the future and we can do that later. Uh, but we will vacate the headquarters that we're in right now. We're no longer needed because that's our main headquarters. We can make it our central command, but I can tell you right now, it's just gonna take some upkeeping to make it our central command. And so I, I think it's, 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 it's one of those that I'm gonna be very honest with you. We would definitely vacate the, the, the building.
So with 65,000 square feet right now? And then at the at city annex that you have, what's the total that you're occupying and what, what with the new building?
So right now, we have 60,000, 65,000 square feet at the headquarters. And then we have an additional 22,000 square feet at the annex.
So that's 80.
So that itself, it's about 80 something. We, we're adding, uh, we're, we're, we're recommending constructing 120,000 on our first phase. But with a, with, with a chance to expand that in the future so that we don't have to worry whenever. We set out the plans and whenever we can do phase two, we'll add phase two. So this also is gonna help us in, in building our, our property room and things like that that are, we're in much, much need.
And is this, uh, the land, is the land included, included in this?
Yes, we include the land. I know we, we, we've spoken to different subject matter experts and, and, and they're, they're, they're actually telling me that we should include more money for the land. But my thing is, I, I think we go with something like this and then just build the plans and then build out in phases, right? If there's something that we cannot build, you know, the, the much critical things that we need as far as space, for example, our 911 center. Our 911 center was built in the 90s. So we, we outgrew that back in 1996 when we first went in. I mean, we're 2025 and we're still operating in the same operating center. So that's critical. Our property room, back in, back in the day, we were 230 officers. Right now, we're 575. So we're talking about a property room that does not fit our need, our needs. So those are things that are critical that will be in phase one. Of course, our detective division, our, our traffic divisions, our tactical division, our training division, all those things that are critical, phase one. Phase two, we can worry about the rest. So I know we talk about numbers here. I'm well aware that it might be where the land might not be 5 million, it might be 8 million. Then we shave off eight, I don't know, 3 million from, from the building itself. That's the way I'm, I'm thinking of maybe formalizing this plan. Again, getting creative, right? Because we wanna be, make sure that we, we get this done.
And being due to this would consist of in May, do we have an area in mind?
We wanna stick into the area of Saunders, very, very centralized headquarters, police headquarters. That's, that's our main focus. But again, you know, we've talking to our economic development, development director, also Tina. You know, they, they have different areas of Laredo where there's also availability of land. So we're, we're open to any suggestions. We just wanna make sure that where we build, there is room for expansion.
Thank you, chief. Mayor, one couple of questions.
Chief, one thing, well, two actually. The training facility, 33.4 million dollars, is that including the purchase of the land? I'm assuming it is. How much money was budgeted for land?
5 million.
5 million, yes. So as you all know, we have property at Pinto, on Pinto Valle. We've got property to 13 mile marker. The city of Laredo owns 1,000 acres, I think?
1,500.
1,500 acres out there. So we'd be able to shave that. And the reason why, obviously, you know, we wanna shave it because we wanna make it look pretty for the public because these are things that the city needs. You all need it, the public safety needs it. And obviously, our citizens need public safety. That's what, we, you know, we thrive on you all being, us being the safest city in Laredo. So those are the things we can shave. Can you let me know what was cut from the 261 million to get it down to the 176? Do you know exactly what was cut? We have the entire list here. LPD headquarters, 110, the 20 facility, 33, sector, sector station, 9 million warehousing. Do you have that?
Mayor, if I may answer that question that was presented earlier. In the packet that we submitted in the first tab that has a recap and impact, the, the very first page is a summary. But as you go through the pages, you're gonna find each, each public, each one of the categories in there. There's one for police in there. And the, the one in green is showing what was approved. So you can go down the list and you can see what was left out in there.
Yes, go ahead.
My friend, is there a possibility we can get that package here so we can see just what I'm talking about?
Do you have the PowerPoint for that?
For the list?
For the list, yeah. Cause we're having that conversation, we're going back and forth and we're seeing what's cut off. And me and councilwoman, we're trying to figure out, even strong side, trying to figure out what are we're talking about right now. So I was just wondering if you have the PowerPoint just to see.
In the PowerPoint, we don't, we didn't go down into the detail because it, it is quite, quite extensive as it lists every item in there. I mean, we can't come back with the.
Can we get it right now? So we have time, we still have time?
Do we have extra books and everything anywhere?
Do you have, I can provide, do you? Do you have, I can provide you a copy of the book?
Do you have some here? We might have some right here. Thank you. Okay, there we go.
Mr. Ned, will we be discussing this in, on Thursday?
I, I would hope we would, yes. And, and if we could, while, while we're handing those out and everything. If we can pull back up the slide on the impact analysis. You know, we're, we're, we're talking about the structure of, of what should be in each one of these projects and everything. I wanted to focus a little bit on this slide here with everybody, mayor, if I could, while we're, while we're handing out there. When we talk about the impact to our taxpayers and everything, the information is here. And this is what I wanna show you. And, and the mayor, mayor alluded to it at the state of the city as well, too. For over 23 years, we have lowered our tax rate every one of those years. And, and so we, in, in my mind, when we go to the taxpayers, we're asking just for some of that back in order to kind of make a difference. So if we can have that impact analysis slide, yeah. And, yeah, this is the historical tax rate. But on the, on the, what, one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we put together, and if you look across the top, it says each penny, that is the estimate, the one penny, the 10 cents, the 13 cents, the 15 and the 20. So regardless of what you put in there, and I, I'm, I'm gonna back you from, give me a number and then we'll fill the number up, right? So that's the concept that I'm wanting to walk through that. Each penny will generate that amount of money in that second line that's filled out. The estimated bond capacity, when we do the leveraging of that is there. The home valuation, $200,000 is a average of our home values in Laredo. And so we use the average because you can go plus or minus. If it's, if it's more expensive, it'll be higher. If you, if it's less, it's lower. Look at the estimated increases we go through there. So now both the bond referendum committee and the city management, however you wanna break up the projects is fine. We're right about that 13 cent column right there in the middle, okay? If you, so if you look at the 13 cent column and come down, if a, if a value is home, if a home is valued at $200,000 a year, the estimated increase for $500 million is $250 a year. All right, that equates to $20.83 a month. What I wanna make sure you see that the leveraging of these funds in order to do the capital is what, what we have the benefit of doing with, with, with Laredo. It's that leveraging out because of our community, we're able to have an impact. We were able to borrow $500 million, which pretty much takes care of everything on, on either one of those lists. There's, there's room for movement as well, too. But it's a $20.83. Now, I'm not, I, I'm not going to say whether or not somebody can afford or not afford that. That's not, I don't think that, that's something that you all have to think about when you're doing that. But that impact, at $20 a month, just for the adjustment, look at all the projects that we can do and look at the work that we can do. We can get public safety moving in the right direction. We can get public infrastructure moving. We have room for the quality of life stuff. The, the Hamilton Hotel, that one on there is, that's the, that's the repairs of the Hamilton Hotel that need to be done for HBAC, the windows, all that work of, of that, that affordable housing that we have there. So, uh, but I wanted to make sure I drew the attention to that because I don't know if the number's too high or too low. That, I think that's everybody, that's what the voters are gonna determine. But at $20.83 a month, that's the impact for doing this. I also wanna leave you with as well, too, our goal with this and every, every, all of our sister cities out there, all of our comparables out there, you go out for a bond referendum every five to seven years. And then you, and then it kind of cycles through. And then as everything falls off, it comes back on. We're doing that right now with our regular bonding as well, too. That's why we're able to reduce our tax rate while we're, while we're doing all the wonderful things that we're doing. So the whole idea about this is that we, we go out every five to seven years. And so when. And so when, when Chief Rodriguez is looking at that and when he says, here's my top priorities and then here's the secondary, the, most of that list in there is tactical stuff, I believe is the way uh Chief Rodriguez had mentioned that. He said, we might be able to hold on to that, some of it's out of the grant money and everything. As long as that all stays stable, we can still get a lot of wonderful things done. But the, the challenge we have is that we're gonna, if we do our jobs right, we'll be going back out in about seven years and saying, hey, what did we do about these things as well too? And that's the challenge we have with Laredo, it's a growing community. We're, we're not slowing down. I think we heard that with the port of entry, it's going to pick up. And, and I think that, but I wanted to make sure you saw the true impact to what our taxpayers are. We are working very hard to try to keep those numbers in check, keep those numbers in line because we're all taxpayers too, right? And we're trying to make that sense of that. But we also understand the importance of public safety, public infrastructure, all of our quality of life. So I'll, I'll get off my soapbox, but I wanted to make sure I shared this slide with you because I would really like when we get to Thursday or when we have the opportunity that we can walk through all this information. It's really to, to, to complement all the work that that bond referendum committee did. They, they, they worked hard, they beat each other up. They, they had some really good conversations. And now it's, now we're trying to set it in front of you saying, okay, which projects are our priority to take to our taxpayers in order to have the best chance of success with this? I'll, I'll stop at that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Neve, for that. I just wanted to clarify with this chart, that's the home valuation of two-hundred thousand, that, and that's roughly Laredo's average. But we also now have a, for the next four years anyway, thanks to our state legislature, a one-hundred thousand dollar homestead tax deduction. So, really, um, the median home value of two-hundred thousand, you deduct a hundred thousand from that and it's even less than that for.
Yeah, I'll, I'll leave that to bond councils.
For, for those with their homestead. I just wanna correct me if I'm wrong.
Point of clarification on that. So the hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption that passed last legislative cycle was for ISD school district taxes, not city taxes.
Just for, okay. Apologies, thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so we, we did just have, we just did, we did just have that conversation about like, you know, earlier about the, the bridge tolls and everything. Um, I think there might be a way for us to kind of be specific on, you know, finding revenue for some of these items, um, in a way that it doesn't result in like a big increase for people that may not wanna vote in favor of, of something like that. I think, um, times that we've bonded out have been for specific projects, like do you want the sports complex, do you want this? Here, we're asking for a lot of items that, um, some people may not, um, want to agree to an increase of, of taxes to pay for. So, um, I know that the committees tried really hard to, um, request, you know, give us your entire wish list. Um, and I know that we're kind of tasked with the responsibility and, and when you say for us to consider affordability, I think that is our job, right? Is to kinda consider what the, that affordability level is for our constituents. And, um, you know, I think for most people, um, a thirty dollar a month increase would be a lot. I, I think even, um, for a lot of people, s- some of these numbers would be, would be hard for them. So, um, I think it would be helpful for, uh, the departments to tie their asks to the different levels as well. Like, um, you know, if we were gonna go with, let's say, a ten cent, um, what would, what would their ask look like versus, you know, giving us their ideal, right? I think that would be helpful for us because I understand that for police and fire with public safety, you know, everything is, is a priority and, and we, we're, we're never keeping up. When it comes to parks and rec, you know, we're never keeping up with the needs. Um, we just, I just wanna make sure that whatever we present to the public is, is a successful package, something that they can feel, feel good about funding and for it not to be a thing that they feel that like, well, where did, where did my tax money go? Cause then they're not gonna support future ones.
Mayor, if I can add a comment to Mr., what Mr. Neve was saying, the two-hundred-and-fifty at the thirteen cents or fifteen cents that would generate the six-hundred million, which would be a twenty-five dollar impact in a monthly amount, would not come into effect on year one. As we get the projects approved, we would only be issuing the debt that we would be building on, on a year, within the next five years per se. So we might have five issuance in the next five years to cover the projects as they relate. So we're looking at five-hundred million, let's say we're gonna, just for example purposes, we're gonna issue a hundred million every year. So the tax, the, the, the twenty, the, the two-hundred-and-fifty or three-hundred dollars would not be an impact on year one. It would be phasing as we issue some of these projects and, or we start the projects and issue the, the bonds themselves. Because the, the other side of it is the MNO, we're gonna have to tie in the, when we do the projects, they have an MNO. And as we move forward and property taxes generate more, that's when we're gonna be able to absorb that because the other potential there is that we would have to then address the MNO side as we address some of these projects that, that we're doing. So I just wanted to point out, it's not an instant, two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred dollars per taxpayer at, as we initiate, it will be throughout the next five years or as we execute this project moving forward.
Mayor, can I say? Do I? Um, I'm, I'm listening here to you, uh, but I might suggest a couple of things for Thursday. Is that when we talked about the cars and everything else that, that you guys had mentioned, that you come prepared for any scenario of questions that might be asked in terms of, um, answering, how are we would get the cars, you know, which is, it's a viable question that people are gonna wanna see. Because everything that they've wanted over the past six months, I think this bond referendum has been going on. I may have, I may have a different view of this, but I mean, I, I really think that everything that is in there is absolutely necessary, all right? So, um, the idea of, of, of cutting it down to the bone and, and, and not getting, and getting the bare minimum from, from these bonds defeats the whole purpose, right? But if you do have other options to get other things that do not belong, like for instance, the vehicles have a five, ten-year life expectancy. So yeah, this, it doesn't belong in there. But everything else that goes in there that's gonna last you for thirty years, the brick and mortar and all that kinda stuff, I really don't think that we should shortchange ourselves because you just mentioned a key component of it right there and then, that a lot of people might not know. The bond issuances don't, you, you get the, you pass the five-hundred and some odd million dollar bond, it doesn't go straight for, you don't go buy or you don't go sell those bonds at five-hundred million. You buy, you sell them as you go along. Whatever project you have, you wanna start the police department first, you sell those bonds. And then you phase everything in as you go along over a long period of time. By the time you finish, you're almost at the next level to go out for bonds again. And I think that's the idea. But the, but the, the other question that should be asked is that whatever else that you're gonna get, the cars and everything else, where, well, you just mentioned that you'd be getting off of another, um, I forgot what you called it. Yeah, so, so now we, we have to be looking at what kind of, uh, you know, debt load, dead load are we looking at, you know, across or over a period of time is what we're gonna need. So, and how is that gonna affect our bond rating after that? So those questions, I guess, can, can be answered, um, on Thursday. But I think the most important part about Thursday is to figure out and kind of lay it easy, everything else that, that, that we're talking about here, and saying, we still have a lot of other options to go and consider before, you know, we, we start slashing everything to death. You know, because the, the other thing that I was worried about as I spoke to Chief, uh, when I went to go visit their department, is that by the time this police station, when we go break ground, it's gonna be three years from now. We don't know what the cost of equipment and materials and all that kinda stuff is gonna be. It can be the, whatever they, they satisfied or whatever they put, eight percent. But at the end of the day, it might be ten, twelve percent. We just don't know. And so, um, I would love to see that we, we, we settle in and we get comfortable with the idea that May is gonna be the day because it is, it is, I've gone to a police station and it is something that we need. And it is something that the public should understand and know that we are in dire need of a new police station. So, uh, I can only speak for myself in saying that, uh, that, that I wouldn't sell our, our, our numbers short with what we have. In fact, uh, I think I spoke to Chief that I might say we're, we're short in some areas. Uh, but I, I think we should really consider, um, every angle and every question that's out there that the public is gonna wanna know because we do need, I mean, he does really need the vehicles, you know? And so, uh, for Thursday, I would, I would just suggest that we come, uh, prepared to have an answer for those things. And so, because really what you're doing is you're practicing for those type of questions that the public is gonna ask. Everybody's gonna be wanting to know, you know, why did you slash it here? And where it does, where are we gonna get the money for that? And then we ask Mr. Neve, how's that gonna affect us in our general fund? Or are we gonna be doing, you know, to, to satisfy our budget? So, uh, I think that's my two cents for it. And, uh, hopefully we can get, get all that tightened up by, by Thursday.
And, and Mayor, uh, to councilman, councilmember Gox's point, one of our committee members in one of the meetings made a very good point as the committees were trying to add or remove, basically remove some of these items that was gonna be presented to the council, to you all. And that was that anything that we remove there, we're taking the ability from that constituent or that citizen to vote on it. Uh, so if it's not there for them to vote, they cannot vote it in, for example. So that was one takeaway from me, from one of those committee members that said, anything that we take or like you're saying, reviews, they don't have the ability to say, well, I do want that and I, I, I'm, I'm willing to vote and take an increase on that because I'm gonna see something beneficial for, for them and their community. So to, to your point.
Well, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
So let's, uh, hopefully Thursday, we can have even the committee members that were involved in, in all this come out and be invited so they can come in and just have their two cents. And ask them as, not only as a committee member, but as a, you know, as a citizen and a taxpayer, why was the reason that you, you, you voted this way or you decided to go this way? So you make a brief point, Mr. President.
And if I may, I, uh, I have the next slide that, that I was trying to touch base on was a historic tax increase rate or the tax rate that we have. If we look at the left side, fiscal year fifteen, our tax rate was sixty-four cents. And as to councilmembers, uh, Dr. King's point, in twenty-one is when the changes came about and that's where the tax rate started reducing to sixty-two, fifty-seven, fifty-three, and we're at fifty-one. So just for illustration purposes, that green bar would be like the five-hundred million dollar amount that Mr. Neve mentioned. Maybe we can look at what that amount, what amount are we comfortable with? And maybe come back and backfill the projects that we need to. But if we were to get to the five-hundred margin, we would be basically at sixty-three cents, which is still below a penny of what we were in twenty-fifteen. And that is the impact that Dr. King was tou- touching on and the difficulty that's general fund has had to balance the budget. We were, we were going from an eight and a half percent growth to a three and a half percent now. And that is a challenge that we have in general fund. General fund's budget is two-hundred-and-seventy-eight million. It is not the nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight million that we talked about, which is our consolidated budget. That represents every other department that we have. General fund relies on two-seventy-eight. That's the, the fund that provides most of the services that our citizens get for public safety, parks and those type of, of, uh, programs that we have in there. And it is very difficult when we balance the budget because we're basically using every penny we get to provide those services. So when it comes to your point, when it comes to manage, building a building, there's no possibility we can do it through the regular general fund. It has to be through referendums where we get this authorization to, to do these projects. Now, the other point, I guess, that I wanted to make just really quick is just because we have the five-hundred-and-twenty-one million, it's, it, it's, it's what the citizens are giving us the authority to bond for. So it's not necessarily, we're gonna go ahead and do it because we need to make sure we absorb the MNO as I mentioned before. So just wanted to make two of those points. Uh, but I wanted to make sure that we just covered this slide because this would get us back to twenty-fifteen tax rate that we had back then.
Yeah, if, and, uh, manager, may I be?
Yes, go ahead.
Management, why is it that we came up with, came in with the numbers a hundred and twenty million for pay for public safe, for public, uh, public works? And we didn't have a committee for that? We have a committee for everything else except for public works, you know, finding out, you know?
Oh, and, and, yeah, and, and Mayor and, Mayor and City Council, uh, there was a public infrastructure committee, subcommittee within that structure. What, uh, what I believe, when, when they went through their conversation, when they went through their debate, uh, the recommendation, cause there's about three recommendations coming out of the bond referendum committee that are, were not related directly to their specific requirements of what their, what their mission was. Uh, but one of them was they wanted to have the city council consider taking five cents out of your current tax rate and committing it to streets, which would generate X number of millions of dollars in order to do that work. Of course, the bond referendum committee, and, and I had that conversation with them as well too, the bond referendum committee is to figure out what bond referendum we should look for debt service. That's really what their, their, their mission was. But that recommendation will be coming forward to you from the bond referendum committee because, but I, I said, I said it was outside their scope and, and so the idea was, uh, that was a recommendation that you probably saw that same recommendation in the charter revision. They wanted to put that into the charter, uh, rules that part of our current money goes to streets because nobody's gonna complain that there's streets. The reason we got to the one-hundred-and-twenty million was, is that we have nine-hundred miles of roads. They have a life expectancy of probably twenty-five years. If you figure that up per lane mile and, and Mr. Chavez can, can get into some of those numbers if we need to. We figure we need about thirty to thirty-four million dollars a year going into our roads. Right now, currently with the work that Mr. Orfield is doing, is, is the, we, we do some other road reconstruction, but the majority of our work is three to four million dollars a year is what we're getting done. And I, I believe that at some point in time, and, and Mayor Protim Perez talked about that as well too. We've, we've had a lot of good set synergy within our conversations. Our roads are gonna wear out faster because of what we are. I mean, because of all that traffic that we see coming and going. So in, in our estimation for city management, thirty to thirty-four million dollars you need every year in order to go to that. That'll help, um, that'll strengthen what Mr. Orfield is doing. That'll help with the engineering and doing all the extra, the streets. I would, I would argue that it will also help us add new roads that we need or it'll be our local match or whatever you wanna call, as we try to grow our north-south and our east-west corridors to help alleviate the traffic. And so that's why we ended up with where we were at. Uh, and in my mind, since we're only looking at a five to seven-year window, I wanted to change the mindset. I wanted to make sure that we were putting public infrastructure dollars out there and I think that's what we were all talking about, trying to say we have to have some money in there. That's how we got to the hundred and twenty million. Go ahead.
Does anybody have any questions at this point? I did mention, I think I had a, this slide here, we didn't go over it. This is kind of an approximate of what the MNO would be. Uh, we're projecting it's about forty-two million dollars on the MNO for all the different projects. And I think that's all I have for you today. Uh, I look forward and having another meeting and go over the, the, the other different projects or, uh, recommendations that council might have.
All right, thank you. There's some question over there.
For Thursday, would it be possible to, I understand that there's a lot of things here. Um, but to, to be able to separate, um, what, which, which items have a twenty-year lifespan versus five, ten and?
Yes, it, yeah, Mayor and City Council, councilmember, yes, we can do that. We can, we can establish and at least give you that life expectancy of any one of those items that are on there. Uh, we, and I, and I think based upon the conversation that we heard as well too, we need to do a little bit more on our MNO side and so that every, you have the full picture of how we will absorb it and how it would fit, so. But we'll take, the booklet has the breakdowns within the booklet. We'll make sure that we, we adjust those worksheets to show all that information.
Mayor motion to open a public hearing and introduce your business.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Motion second. On favor, aye. Opposed, motion pass.
Number one, public inquiry ordinance authorizes the city manager to grant a non-exclusive franchise of Toyota Invado STX to use and present the future streets, avenues, alleys, roads, highways, sideways easements, and other public rights to support the state of Laredo for purpose of constructing, maintaining, and operating a commercial container refuse gathering and disposing service franchise will be deposited to the general funds. Number two, public inquiry ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas, amending chapter six animals and following the code of ordinances by reinstating the full function of animal care services of the division of the Laredo Health, the Laredo Public Health Department abolishing the animal care department and director position originating through ordinance twenty sixteen oh one thirty-two, designating assistant director, supervising responsibilities over the division, defining key terms, setting enforceable restrictions of animal ownership, and keeping in conformance this current state law, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative, providing severability clause, providing for publication declared an effective date. Number three, public inquiry ordinance amending Laredo Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty-eight, article nine, public right-of-way management, division one, section twenty-eight dash one sixty-five. Definition of section twenty-eight dash one sixty-seven, due to the decoordination, defining hydroexcavation, mandating hydroexcavation to expose existing utilities or public right-of-way that provide for the greater control to reduce the potential damage to state Laredo's infrastructure or public right-of-way. Number four, public inquiry ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas, amending the city of Laredo's FY twenty twenty-five annual budget by appropriating revenues and expenses in an estimated amount of nine hundred and nine thousand in the twenty nineteen certificate of obligation bond affecting various funds, twenty nineteen CO, twenty nineteen CEO environmental, and twenty nineteen CEO transit funds. The interest earnings being appropriated are for the, are for the arbitrage liability payment due to the U.S. Treasury funding is available in twenty nineteen certificate of obligation bond, various, various funds. Number five, public inquiry ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas, amending the city of Laredo's fiscal year twenty twenty-five annual budget by appropriating revenues and expenses in an estimated amount of five hundred and fifty thousand in the waterworks and sewer system funds, twenty nineteen waterworks and sewer revenue bond, the interest earnings being appropriated are for the arbitrage liability payment due to the U.S. Treasury. Number six, public inquiry ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas, amending the city of Laredo's fiscal year twenty twenty-five annual budget by appropriating revenues and expenses in an estimated amount of twenty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty to the twenty nineteen personal property finance contractual obligation bond, the interest earnings being appropriated to the, for the arbitrage liability payment due to the U.S. Treasury fund is available in twenty nineteen PFCO bond. Number seven, an ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas, amending chapter nineteen, article seven of the Code of Ordinances by adding subsection and to prohibit the parking of vehicles on a public street within eight feet of a mailbox. Number eight, public in discussion on the voluntary annexation initial zone of M1 light manufacturers on attractive land totaling eight point five five acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, known as annexation track five, all carriers tracked located south of FM fourteen seventy-two and southeast of Diesel Road. The fine zoning commission recommends approval of the annexation initial zoning staff supports the annexation and initial zoning. Number nine, public hearing, public hearing and discussion on the voluntary annexation initial zone of M1 light manufacturers on attractive land totaling thirteen point four nine four zero acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, known as annexation track six, when he got tracked located west of West Park Road and north of El Pico Road. The fine zoning commission recommends approval of the annexation and initial zoning staff supports the annexation and initial zoning. Number ten, public hearing discussion, public hearing and discussion on the voluntary annexation and initial zone of M1 light manufacturing dish on the tract of land totaling two hundred and twenty point thirty-two acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, known as annexation track seven, Bastrop RM Investments Track, located north of FM fourteen seventy-two and west of FM three 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 eight. The fine zoning commission recommended approval of the annexation and initial zoning staff supports the annexation and initial zoning.
Number ten. Number nine? I do want to get in one of these. All right. Pardon? Okay. Any motion to close and introduce? I saw moved. Yeah, all right. For or against? We'll start with number one. For or against, for or against, for or against? On favor?
Motion and close introduce.
Okay. On favor? Second, motion pass. Number two, for or against, for or against, for or against? Motion second, on favor? Opposed, motion pass. Number three, for or against, for or against, for or against?
Motion and close introduce.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number five, for or against, number four? Number four, sorry. Number four, for or against, for or against, for or against?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I, I would assume this would be addressed to city management. I would just like an explanation of what arbitrage liability payments are and how, um, the twenty nineteen certificate of obligation bonds are, need, how we are obligated to pay this to the U.S. Treasury for bonds that were over six years old now.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Rubi Sambala, Assistant Finance Director, for the, for the record. Usually in all of our bonds, uh, we have a three year, three year that we can spend all of our interest earnings without having a rebate liability. Basically, what that means is that whatever interest is earned on bonds on the first three years, the city gets to keep them. You, we do not have to, to pay them back. After the three years of a bond, when you still have balances left over, any interest generated has to be returned to the U.S. Treasury if it's not spent, the interest generated, especially and only when, um, whatever we're paying the, the investors. Let's say, for example, in the twenty nineteen that you were saying, we sold those bonds at two point forty-five percent. And after COVID and everything that happened and inflation, the market was, um, CDs were doing very well. They were earning five to five point fifty percent. So you see, we were earning way more than we were paying our investors. So we have, um, um, we have Hilltop Securities is actually our arbitrage consultant. And they, every five years, they do this rebate calculation for all of our bonds. And so this time it was the twenty nineteen. So for these past years, they earned, um, in combination of all the threes, about one point eight million of, of interest earnings that have to return to the U.S. Treasury. So my recommendation is just like whenever we get bond spending within the, within the three years.
All right. Um, Mr. Neb is there? Uh, so this gets very technical, right? Because a lot of these bonds are put out for projects, um, that we don't necessarily know the details. We make assumptions about that money being spent. And yet here we are, having, having not spent all of the money. Were the projects completed? Were they changed? How is it that we end up with such a large payment?
And so, and Mayor and City Council, uh, this was a conversation that we had, and this is a renewed interest. Finances have been working really hard for the last, I'd say, the last nine months for sure, at least within this whole budget year as, as well, too. We are, we keep, we, we are asking the departments to spend the old money first. And so if you, if you, we have a, we have a sheet now that Finest carries with them that shows even money that we had sitting back from two thousand sixteen. And we use that money, close it out, move it forward, because I don't think there's, I don't know if it's left over cash essentially for that, but that we have to account for it up in that process. And so what happened is, and I, we, we, when we found that, uh, you know, this, this ends up happening for this year, but our marching orders coming forward is we get this money spent so that we don't keep returning the interest, the, the extra interest with on that money.
And so, and, and as, as Councilmember Gavza was, um, commenting earlier, that we do need to be very good stewards of the money. And this is not, I mean, I don't think the public should mistake this to mean that somehow, um, there was something going on that wasn't properly accounted for. Actually, this is a way to keep very close tabs on what the city is spending. And, um, I'm very happy that our finance department is looking all the way back to all of the money that's out there to make sure that we do meet our obligations. But, um, with such a, a large fund, I would like to make sure that, or, I'm sure council would like to make sure that the projects were completed as intended.
And, and in really, really layman's terms and a simple way to, to actually say this is that essentially we're paying back the interest we should never have earned.
Right.
That's the method of what this is because we should have spent on the projects that we borrowed the money for. And, uh, and some of that's out there, and yes, exactly what you're talking about. We have a big utility. There's a lot of funds that are in there, uh, saving graces that some of those funds are being reallocated to the work that we're, we're doing in order to, to replace the lines and everything. But, uh, I think we have a system coming forward that we won't run into this situation. Or we should, it should be very rare from here on out.
I, I think that's the, the best suggestion to make sure that the, our systems are in place to avoid this situation in the future. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Do you go for?
I'll move to closing introduce.
Okay, second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number five, for or against, for or against, for or against?
Motion and closing introduce.
Motion second?
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number six, for or against, for or against, for or against?
Motion and closing introduce.
Motion?
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number seven, for or against, for or against, for or against?
Mayor, I, I think this, uh, motion and table this item.
Motion, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Table, title number seven. Number eight, for or against, for or against, for or against?
Apologies. Um, just really quick, Vanessa Guerra from your planning staff?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, these items are on not for action. They're just for discussion purposes and public hearing. So we'd be happy to give a presentation or we can do that at the next meeting if you so choose.
Please, next meeting.
For eight?
Yes.
For number eight?
For number eight through, uh, ten.
How long is that explanation? We can leave it for the next meeting if you?
We can do, we can do it the next meeting.
I think we should for the next meeting. All right, thank you. All right.
Just to close the public hearing, Mayor?
Close the public hearing, but she can give you an explanation of the voluntary annexations.
All right, next meeting.
No, not introduce, just to close the public hearing.
So it's eight, nine, and what?
Ten.
Yeah. All right. Next is?
Number eleven, interdiction ordinances.
All right.
Motion introduce, uh, motion open, interdiction ordinances.
Motion?
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number twelve, for or against, for or against, for or against?
A motion to approve final reading of ordinances, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
I'd, I'd like to call out fifteen, please, if we could.
Fifteen is out.
Fifteen is out.
No, I, I retract. I'm sorry, I retract. I retract it.
Retracted. Fifteen retracted.
Yeah, that's fine.
Continue. Motion to approve the ordinances, thirteen through twenty, and I'll continue to twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Motion open up the consent agenda, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Motion?
Second.
Second, on favor?
Are we, I'm sorry, what, what items?
We're just opening up twenty-five and twenty-six.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Opposed, motion pass. Mr. Richard, anything on twenty-five or twenty-six?
Recommendation for approval.
Correct. Kent Richard, interim director, we have a motion for approval on items twenty-five and twenty-six?
Motion to approve twenty-five and twenty-six.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number twenty-seven.
Okay.
And twenty-eight. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Mr. Neb? Motion approved?
Yes, sir. Uh, please. Uh, yeah, these are both just the updates. You have all the information. That's to our legislative trips as to what we're going to try to cover.
Second.
Mayor? May I have a question? Um, will you be, uh, assigning us? I saw the, the schedule of meetings that they're still developing. Are you going to have, well, assignments are?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor and City Council, as soon as we have a, a confirmation on what meetings we have, then we'll put out the all call and we'll, we'll, we'll essentially divide and conquer, right? And we'll try to get everybody on everything that they want to participate with, uh, because that, it seems to work really, really well. At least it did last year. So that'll be the intent.
I appreciate that.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, so, Mr. Neb, do you have any, do we have any samples of what we're trying to, to find in legislation right now?
I'm sorry?
Do we have like the, the categories right now at least, just to?
Yeah, I, I believe they were sent out and we do have them.
I know, but just also so the public can see what we're trying to?
Yes.
So we, we're trying to go figure out. Thank you, Mr. Neb.
Karen Gobert-Rubias, for the record, yes, we do. Um, so they are part of this agenda. And we will have a, a landing page on our website with that information as well. And that goes part of our efforts of, um, having more like engagement and communication about these topics, both internally and externally as well. So that is available.
And, and Mayor and Councilmember, yeah, we'll make sure that we put all that information out there. We're going to keep you hopping. We're going to keep you busy.
Yeah, no, and hopefully we, we use, uh, PIO to encourage the community to have, to engage us and, and kids, like, like the veterans did today, uh, in case they want to have any information for us to ask in legislation and just to ask about, to any questions they want us to ask.
Certainly.
So they have the, the, that opportunity and that, to reach out and have that, uh, that opportunity just to have.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, I understood. We can make sure that that happens as well, too. And then, and we'll also have, uh, what the municipality puts out saying, these are the bills that are going to affect your work as a city. And then you'll be able to help with those as well, too, if that's what you choose to do. So, yes, sir.
And just a quick comment to Councilmember Sierra's, uh, question regarding the all call. I did send out, um, what we had since Friday. We have had a few more meetings added and I will send that again, um, to you tomorrow. But from those of you who have joined us before, some of them do come very last minute. So we'll try to move you around and, and update you as they come. But, um, we'll send the follow-up tomorrow for that.
I'm sorry, from the top of your head, do you know if there's an animal shelter, uh, meeting?
There's not, um, a, like, an, an item specific to that. We are meeting with the Department of State Health Services and they do oversee some programs related, um, to, uh, funding for possible animal care issues. So that is one of the topics that we wanted to discuss with them. But we do have a lot of health, um, issues here. So, um, if we don't get to that then, I've already mentioned to them that we are willing to go up again or hold a virtual meeting to talk specifically about that issue.
Okay, and we can have a?
Yes, and they're aware.
Include it, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Mayor, motion to approve number twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and up to forty.
One at seven.
Second.
Thirty-two at seven.
Thirty-two, at seven.
Anything else? No? Would you go to open up thirty-two?
Motion, motion opens up at thirty-two?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass, thirty-two.
Consideration to renew contract FY twenty-four dash zero-two-nine Sensible Services, Holy Springs, North Carolina, for billing and provider credentialing services for the detoxification department for an annual amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand for a total contract value amount of six hundred and forty-eight thousand. This award was for a one-year period and provided for the possible extension of this contract for two additional one-year term periods upon mutual agreement of both parties. This is the first extension of two and funding is available in detoxification budget. Hello, Dr. Martinez, I just wanted to ask, um, and, and it, it could be just the way it was written, is, what does the six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars cover?
Um, good evening, Mayor, Council. Dr. Viviana Martinez, Intoxification Director, for the record. So, uh, what Sensible does for us, they do all our credentialing applications and maintain our credentialing with our network providers, commercial insurances on Medicaid and Medicare. And they do all the billing for us. Um, so we document in our EMR, they extract everything to conduct the billing. And then, um, any, um, anything that gets denied, any appeals that, um, happen for insurances that do not want to approve. And then also the continuation, uh, for services as they usually approve anywhere from five to seven days. Our patients stay up to three weeks at times. So then when the authorization expires, then they, uh, move forward with, um, getting that authorization renewed.
So is, well, it says the annual amount is two hundred and sixteen thousand and the total contract value amount is six hundred and forty-eight thousand?
So they have already, they've already done a year with us. Um, the original proposal was that we could extend them up to two more years. So to, um, the first year was a little more, a little more than the two hundred and sixteen thousand because that included some initial applications and whatnot. So the total is six hundred and forty-eight thousand would be the total for, if they were to get renewed this year and then the following year. It would be for a total of three years worth of services.
Okay, I think that's where.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just to clarify your question, we're trying to put into every, Jaime Zapata, person agent for the record.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Um, we're trying to put here in every agenda item, um, the annual amount that we're going to spend on that contract.
Uh, I'm sorry, um, we're trying to put here in every agenda item, um, the annual amount that we're gonna spend on that contract, however, the contract value includes, um, the possible extensions, for you to pre-approve basically the extensions, whether the city would like to either extend the contract, or decide to terminate.
So, does that mean that you would not come back to Council for the next contract extension?
Correct. That would expedite the process for every department, because if we bring it back for an extension, it usually takes more time, um, to be able to continue or to terminate the contract with, with, with the vendor.
Okay, and is, is that a normal practice then, that you extend out and you don't kind of keep coming back?
In my experience, yes, it, of course, it, it's depending on management, uh, we, we had already spoken to legal about it, and they said that it would be possible for us to include it like this, so we won't have the same items coming back again and again and again, for five years or for three years, or for the, for the amount of the, of the contract, uh, term.
Well, if, if management's comfortable with that, it, I guess it's just, uh, the idea that Council provides some, um, oversight, but...
Correct.
To be honest, if, if management is looking over it, then I think...
Well, actually, that's it's, it, this is only if the contract stays as is, of course, and any amendments to a contract, we have to bring it back to Council for approval.
Yeah, my, also, management, what do you, what, what do you recommend, what is, is your recommendation?
Yeah, our, our, our recommendation, Mayor and City Council, is to approve this and move forward, we had a successful year with them last year, and so this is just an extension of that with, with no changes, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Motion to approve, number thirty-two.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And I would, I would, I would just like to add, um, because this is a question we get very often, we average approximately two-hundred-thousand dollars a month worth of billing. We don't necessarily get all that, because any of you that have worked with insurances, right, you will bill an amount and then whatever, but we do, you know, because it does seem like a very high amount, but we are averaging two-hundred-thousand dollars worth of billing per month, um, and that is, um, you know, based on what we're billing for right now, and so we have about thirty-two percent of our, all of our population with some sort of insurance, most of the insurances are for underserved individuals, which are mainly from the, uh, uh, marketplace. But just so you can get an idea, so what would it cost us for a year is what we bill for in one month.
Alright.
Great.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve number forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Motion to approve number fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty? Sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Motion to approve seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four. Yes, sir.
I would like to table item eighty-three.
Motion, table eighty-three, next.
Motion, second? All in favor? Table number eighty-three.
Table. Eighty-four, correct, okay. Motion to approve eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Motion to approve eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one-hundred, one-hundred-and-one. One oh-one?
So, one oh-one out?
One oh-two and one oh-three.
Motion, accept, uh...
One oh-one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, one oh-one.
One oh-one, item number one oh-one, authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one to D N Tanks Inc. of Wakeville, Massachusetts, in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-nineteen, and eighty-seven cents for the South Lion Ground Storage Tank Demolition and Replacement Project, revised contract amount is nine million, six-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Funding is available on the Waterworks Fund, twenty-twenty-two Water Revenue Bond. Uh, hello, Mr. Fishker?
Good evening.
Um, it is a very large amount for a change order, and so I was just wondering if you could explain a little bit why it's needed?
I can. As most of you know, we've changed the scope of that project at the Lions Tank to accommodate a park and some other things, and that then created a deviation from the original plans, which is what the note is here, and so therefore, we had to reconfigure the piping and some of those things, uh, so that count, that is a big part of this, and then you're also probably aware, we're installing a new thirty-six inch line, which will end up at that tank site and go to the Jefferson Plant, uh, so we're accommodating that, that thirty-six inch connection as part of this activity, so that we don't have to dig the ground up again when the pipeline gets there. So, it's a combination of things, we've changed elevations to accommodate driveways and things to get into the park, which has modified the piping, and we're accommodating the thirty-six inch now as part of this versus when the pipeline gets there.
So, the park proposal, how much is that? Or, I guess, is, does it exist just around the tanks?
Yes, there's a block pattern and a little park that's being created around those tanks, and there's an entrance to that, and that's changed the barrier walls and the, and, and a bunch of the elevations, and there's a driveway now that goes in there, so, uh, that's, that's the, uh, elevation change that changed the piping.
Alright, well, thank you very much for the explanation.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, sir, we, also, the thirty-six inch line is tucked out, so that minimal, minimal damage will occur when, when you come back into it.
Yes, we're, we're proposing to make that, um, adjustment now, so that we don't have to re-excavate when the pipeline gets there.
Smart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve number one zero one.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Mayor, before we go into executive session, can we skip to Laredo Mass, Mass Transit Board? So, my motion is to recess as a Laredo City Council and convene as a Laredo Mass Transit Board.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Motion to approve number one oh-nine, one-ten, and one-eleven.
Motion? Second?
Mayor, we should move to session, can we...
We need to approve this first.
Yeah. All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
Motion to adjourn as a Laredo Mass Transit Board and reconvene as a Laredo City Council.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Mayor, can we, before we move to session, can we get, bring item one twelve, please?
What? And I believe, we can bring it together with, uh, Mr. Gavas' agenda, close quarter, but Mr. Gavas, can we bring also agenda item which was? Uh, does it, uh, one, one twelve C what?
One twelve C.
Alright. Second.
Did you wanna add something?
It's about utilities. No, okay.
No, motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Discussion with possible, uh, action, and update on how utility department manages the maintenance and ex, uh, exercising the valves, as well as the documentation of, documentation of contractors and any other matters, incidents there, too. The reason I'm bringing up this item is that I know that last time we had this, uh, this water boil, uh, we had a problem with, uh, working the, the valves that we had, and I wanna know if we have any, if we have a program or something, you know, already end of movement and see if we had, you know, how many valves we have, how many, how many times we, you know, exercise them, and the, the more critical valves, have you changed them, and how many valves do we have around the city, do you have that, those numbers, Mr. Fishker?
A lot.
I'm seeing, I think...
I don't have the exact number.
I'm thinking around fifty-nine thousand valves that are under fifty-nine to forty, fifty-nine thousand, more or less.
Uh, that sounds like a lot to me, but...
Yeah.
A lot more than a lot.
Yeah, so, but anyways, it's a lot, you still gotta have a program that is, that we're working those valves, because we're trying to isolate, last time that we had the problem, we couldn't isolate from one side to the other.
Let me remind Council of the presentation I made when I first came here, with that little seesaw, and I talked about valve programs and water, uh, leak detection and those kind of things, uh, and I'll remind Council that you approved my request to purchase two valve-turning trailers. Uh, those should be arriving here fairly soon, that program will be up and running, that's a, valve maintenance is a core program for a water utility, that's not an optional item, and so we will have one, and we will turn the large valves at least annually, that's twelve-inch and above.
Okay.
And then we'll get to the smaller valves less often, but we'll get to those.
So, which, uh, which one of the, do you have, at least, do you have the most critical valves that, that we mainly use coming out from, that distributes the water to the community? Or have we, have we, have we, have we changed those, or have we even looked at them, or how, how old are they?
Well, what will happen, and you'll see this, when we start a valve program, we will find valves that have been closed for ten years. We will find valves that we can't find, we will find valves that are broken and we can't operate, and we find those every time we have a main break, and main breaks extend their time and extend their span, because we can't operate valves, all that will be fixed, and we will be tearing up streets replacing valves, you can make book on that, okay?
Do you have a starting date of that?
The valve equipment should be coming in in the next month, we will be on it, we've already got plans to do that, so it will be happening, and that will happen in coordination with a lot of our main replacements, and you're gonna see a lot of activity in the great city of Laredo.
Do you, are we gonna go out for contractors, or is that gonna be in-house?
The valve maintenance program will be in-house, that's a core function of our department, that's what we will do.
Get any action?
No, I was just, uh, just asking, asking a question.
Just for discussion?
This is for discussion only.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Alright, thank you.
Now, we'll, we'll jump over to my, uh, the discussion for, on, uh, one twelve C, which is in, in, in light of, uh, what Mr. Bracke was asking.
Okay, go ahead.
A discussion with possible action regarding updating our utilities department status, highlighting improvement in report, newly appointed utilities director and any other matters and incidents there, too. Uh, first of all, uh, and, and I say this from the bottom of my heart, I cannot be more proud of our utilities people out during the weather, uh, that, and what I witnessed as a new member of this council, I got to see firsthand and stand right beside them at, on tour through occasions, when we had ruptured water lines in freezing weather, and you know, when you see something like that, it, you, you can't help but feel proud, and sometimes people go unrecognized for doing that. I would just wanna let you know that, uh, I'm proud of the, the work that those people are doing, sometimes it goes, uh, unrecognized, and, and, and what they have to go through in terms of how the public perceives them is not fair. There are certain things that they have to do in standing there, uh, for instance, the one that I, one of the ones that I saw was at one-thirty in the morning of a line, three thousand line street, and they have to be there, and, uh, and yet people are upset at them that, because they don't have like, any water. So, with the programs that you're putting in place, and I remember, I, I put this item because I just got here, and I'm really not sure what the status of anything is in terms of your department is, but what I saw was, um, extraordinary, to say the least. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, uh, from, from, from your vantage point, since you've gotten here, uh, more importantly, do you see us headed in the right direction in terms of, of, I'm not sure if we're going in the right direction of getting a permanent fix for a lot of these things, because these things are, obviously, ground moves, ground swells up, it freezes, it contracts, it expands, it's almost like a living organism, you know, that's just constantly moving, um, and I just wanted to get your opinion on as, as we move forward, because I, I have no clue what you do for a living, right? So, I needed to just make sure, from, from my perspective, that, uh, these people are being taken care of, number one, number two, that we have an action plan in place for, uh, at one point or another eliminating those things from happening.
Um, Mayor, Council, City Manager, uh, I have a short presentation, which I think will give you some insight into what's going on in the Utility Department, and I'll be, I'll, I'll just tell you, I'm damn proud of the people, they work hard, but they need the tools to work well, and I'm gonna do everything I can, and I'm sure you'll be supportive to do that, valve operating equipment's part of it, but there's a lot to it, and you know what? It's cold out, and it was raining, and, uh, it was pretty ugly a couple of days, I went out on main breaks, and so I, so I, so I compliment them, and so thank you for that comment, I appreciate it. If you would, I'll start into my little presentation. This is a picture of our, our water museum, and I don't know if any of you have been there, uh, but I happened to have my wife in town after we went to the Rose Bowl, and so the, one of the first place I always take my wife, she's seen a million water plants, as you can imagine, in fifty-four years, but I took her to the water museum, my wife's a retired educator, and she was wowed, okay? And I felt, that excited me, unfortunately, some of our exhibits there don't work, that's gonna stop, they're all gonna get repaired, because when you have people in a facility that you own and operate, and the exhibits don't work, they look across the street and say, hey, does that place over there work? That's the Jefferson Water Plant, and I think this could be a real positive thing for our community, I know Council has some, some, some interest in that also, so we're gonna make that part of our D N A, so to speak. Uh, we're gonna hold meetings there, we're actually doing that stuff as we speak, Sheila Serna is our curator, and I give her that title, 'cause I wanna raise the esteem of that facility, and I think she'll do a great job there, um, and, uh, and I also think that facility lends itself to corporate sponsorship, so we're gonna look into that. Remember, I was a C E O of a hospital system, and water is health, and health is health, and so I think there's a lot of synergies there, so we're gonna be pursuing that, because I want that place to be top-notch and first-class, okay? Cross-connection control, the boil order, it's in our rearview mirror, I hope, and it will be. Uh, we've put a lot of things in place, but one of them is a cross-control program to get us in compliance with what the T C U, T C E Q expects a city to do. We will be top-notch in cross-connection, and they're very impressed with the work that Sheila and her group are doing, uh, so that's playing itself out, and it's more than just, uh, backflow, it's, it's, they're adding technology so that people can report things more efficiently and more effectively, and we can process things, and so there's a lot to it, uh, but they're, they're really on it, and I think they're gonna do a great job, so you can rest assured, we're gonna continue to get better at that. Sampling, uh, hopefully, I don't know whether you've ever seen what sampling takes place and how we do it, but there's a picture of it. We've made some major changes in our sampling processes, all of our bacteria sampling is now done by certified operators. It's either the guys in the water treatment plant, which is the way it's done in every other city I, or utility I've ever been associated with, it wasn't here, it was kinda bifurcated, so now we've put it back in my mind where it belongs, and we have certified people doing it. We're going through our little challenges of proper sampling and those kind of things, but we'll get better at it, and we'll be the best at it, so we'll, rest assured, we're, we're gonna be on that. Lead and copper rule, we were supposed to be in compliance with doing an inventory of our service lines for type of metal in October. I got here October twenty-first, that was after the deadline, we had three years to accomplish that, we didn't do it. We are now in compliance, and we've got kudos from our regulators, and we've done the notices, we've got them on the website, I'll be bringing to you some opportunities on how we might address lead service lines as we move along that process, but there's a lot of work to be done yet, the next reporting period is twenty-seventeen, but we're in compliance, and ironically, that, we had a, a ratings call about a week or two ago, and one of the things they asked us were, are you in compliance for lead and copper? We are, okay? It means something, especially when you talk about risk, okay? That's been accomplished. Jefferson Plant, I talked about...
Twenty-twenty-seven?
Go ahead.
You said twenty-seventeen or twenty-twenty-seven, next come...
Twenty-twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Did I say twenty-seventeen?
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you, thank you for correcting me, Mayor. Uh, picture of the Jefferson Plant. Uh, this is that thirty-six inch line I was talking about that's heading over to the Lions Tanks. This is where it goes into the treatment plant. This is a replacement of, of, of a thirty-inch line that we had problems with, a ductal iron pipe. Fascinating stuff. There's a lot of neat stuff going on in the Utility Department. I want everybody to know that. It's important for my employees and it's important for this community in my humble opinion. Okay? And by the way, the failure of this line a few years ago caused a massive boil order. Some of you may remember that. That'll be a thing of the past. Okay? And then, this is a, an interesting picture. Can you tell what is going on there?
Sludge.
Yeah, that's, that's the fifty-four inch line that we were all set to put the extra flow. From Zacate in when the new Manadas plant is done. Remember, we're gonna split those flows? Guess what? If we'd have put that flow in that pipe, it's forty percent clogged, we'd had a problem. And sometimes you get lucky in life, okay? We had a break on this line. And so this is why you do robotic pipe inspection when you don't think you need it. I can assure you, when that new plant comes online and we start diverting flow at the end of this year or shortly thereafter, I won't be here. But that pipe will be clean. And it'll be ready to take the flow and we won't have a oh no type of moment in Laredo, Texas. Okay? And by the way. This is a robot that we're gonna, I'm gonna come to ask you to buy. I'm gonna buy two of those if you give me the permission. That's a robot that takes the place of a four hundred thousand dollar truck and a piece of equipment that does CCTV in our sewer lines. This is what can be done. That's a ninety thousand dollar item. It's self-propelled. That is TV that goes in the sewer and takes pictures. Okay? And so this does that. It's all self-propelled. You drop it in, it goes and comes back, takes all the information and we download it. Well, no, it doesn't clean anything. It looks inside the pipe to tell us what's in there, but that's. And that's what.
Colonoscopy.
Would you call?
Colonoscopy.
You know what? I like that. I'm a healthcare guy. I'm into that, right?
Yeah.
No pun intended.
You know, Mayor, I used to, I used to tell our, our mayor in Arlington who questioned me about bacteria samples. I said, Mayor, it's like having a tumor. You test them and make sure that they're really malignant before you get crazy about it, right? Same concept. But anyways, this is the kind of thing we can bring to fore. That will improve our processes and allow us to do a lot better work. This is for eight to twelve inch pipe. There's a much bigger robot that you use for the fifty-four inch stuff. And by the way, that robot has three, it's called three-dimensional robot, okay, multi-sensor. It can look above. It can get CCTV. It's got sonar and then it's got a la- laser. So you can see below the water level, so you can see that kinda stuff. Remember, when you put something in a pipe to do TV, it floats. You can't see down in the water. You can see forty percent of the pipe being clogged. With three D centering, you can. That's why you do it. Okay? So those are things coming and things we're gonna do. And so I wanna give you a little view of my world when I got here and what I saw and how we react to it. By the way, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but, um, our utility website, we hadn't renewed the contract. And of course, that became very important to do all of our lead notices and all the stuff we need to do, so we quickly got that in, 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 in place. You know what happened in October. So we stood up a cross-connection program that I'm really proud of. We've now achieved compliance for lead and copper. We reviewed the chlorine dioxide project that was in front of you at my first council meeting. We had the pre-construction meeting this week. And we're gonna have a groundbreaking if the mayor's available in September, or in February.
I'll be here.
Okay? So we're off and going. I told you about reorganizing the water sampling activity. Uh, we're, we, we've talked about doing a partnership with the Health Department. That may be changing. Uh, and by the way, we did purchase some water rights from the Rio Grande that you approved not too long ago. Okay? Financial improvement. Uh, I'm a, I'm a kind of a five-pronged guy, okay? I think we ought to be able to walk, chew gum and then spit it out and job two, right? So you're gonna see the kinda way that I do performance planning. And one of them obviously should be financial improvement. As you know, we found some unbilled septic fees from a year ago. We've recovered all of those. So we've enhanced our revenue stream by two hundred and forty-one thousand. We've consolidated some divisions. I've, I've talked about how we consolidated, uh, conservation and, and the pollution control and call it water monitoring. That's a savings. Uh, we reevaluated a purchase we were gonna make for some property and saved one point five million dollars. Uh, I, excuse me, I monitor accounts receivable. Uh, one of the things, one of the little clicks I have, having once been a business manager. Is when I typically go somewhere, I try to look at all the payables for about a month or two. Just see what's going on. And it's funny when you ask a couple of questions about why are we, why are we renewing that and where does this go and people go, I don't know. And then you ask and we were just paying it because we've always paid it. And so you, so there's money to be found and we found some. Okay? Um, and then the updated pricing for city services, I'm not gonna put a price on that, but. Uh, traditionally, we put in fixed fees for things and then we, you know, we charge five hundred and it costs us a thousand. And I'm not sure that our residents wanna be subsidizing that kinda stuff, so now it's at cost. We'll, we'll, we'll be the cheapest cost in town, but we'll get full recovery of our costs and I, and I think that's appropriate. Operational efficiency and staff training. You're gonna hear a lot about that from me. We gotta get better. We gotta get smarter and, and we gotta get more efficient. I told you about the operating the valve equipment. That's in play. You've approved that. Thank you. Uh, I put people, I put people at the water museum. Uh, it's staffed. Um, I, I want some activity down there. Uh, we engaged our, I'll call our water quality consultants, Nacho and Ardua. And we've done some training and we're gonna get better at sampling and we've got some SOPs that I think you'll be proud of. Uh, to how we handle if we ever have a positive. Because I don't ever want this whole city to be affected by a single bad sample. Okay? There's ways to prevent that and deal with it and we're gonna do everything we can to make sure if we have a problem. We isolate it and deal with it quickly because we've thought about how to do that. Schedule training for our staff for, you know, visits for backflow prevention and those kinda things. And as I said to you, we've transitioned to water bacteria sampling to the treatment plant. Customer service and billing, uh, we're gonna be changing out our AMI meters. We've got a system that doesn't work. We've got stuff that's half working and not working and. It's, 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 it's a, it's an interesting puzzle, but we've got it figured out. It'll take us four years, but we'll have it right when we're done. And, and we'll have the efficiencies we should get from that. Updated procedures for customer communications. Uh, kinda fascinating and of course, council member King, him and I get to send texts all day and all, all night on main breaks. Uh, but what it did point out is we've got some issues with how we communicate to people and tell them what's going on, so. We've addressed that with our PIO and I think we've got a good system now and. Hopefully, we won't have to use it a lot, but when, when we do, it'll work. Uh, the other thing, there's a, there's a thing there that says implement SOP for planned water outings, outages. As I said, we're gonna be operating valves and we're gonna be replacing mains, so we're gonna have outages. Uh, but we need to go bottom the right way. If we're gonna shut down a five-block area and there's four broken valves, I want all four valves replaced in one shutdown. You know, this stuff is not complicated. It just takes a little thinking. You go and excavate all four valves and you put a plate over them. And you get every valve ready to go in and you go in and go snap, snap, and you put four of them in, you put four crews there and you're done in two hours. And you replace four valves. We're not gonna do it four straight days and shut the same people down four times. That's a, a better SOP in my humble opinion. Road repairs. Another agenda item that I hear a lot of from of you about. And, and I, by the way, you'll find out one thing about me. I've had two or three people from the community, contractors and stuff, come in and see me. And they gave me some great insights. And I implemented things because they gave me those insights, so I don't get offended. I get embarrassed and I get energized when I find out things aren't working the way I think they should. And that, that don't reflect well on this department. And so we're gonna be on that stuff. Road repairs will be done. Final repair in fifteen days. Okay? So we have a repair today. We put the temporary patch in. Okay? Within fifteen days, we'll have the finished patch. And that's the deal. And I, you know, we've talked about that with my people. They've said they can do it. I said, I expect it. I'm a, I'm a big fan of Disney. Disney tells you we'll do it in fifteen days when they know they can get it done in seven. Okay? That's creating expectations and managing, cuz we're gonna fix it. So we'll see how it plays out, but that's the expectation. Uh, we published the lead service line talking points. It seems to have gone pretty flawlessly. You know, there's a lot of, when you publish lead things and all these, you know, disclaimers you have to publish, so, sometimes it causes a lot of issues. But when we do that kinda stuff, we have to be smart enough to give people the answers so that people answering the phone can be responsive. And I want the right message the first time. I don't wanna have to unravel somebody's opinion or those kinda things. So it seems to have worked pretty well. Identified water line replacement listing. Uh, this is kinda the punchline. Uh, we've identified sixty-nine water main projects that we're gonna do. There's something for all of you in every one of your districts. Okay? Uh, here's the game plan. We are having three of those lines designed as we speak. They'll be done probably next week. I will then be going out to bid on those, to those design plans. I believe we will get bidders to use a new technology that I piloted in Arlington, Texas. Called pipe bursting, pre-chlorinated pipe bursting. If in fact, we get some bidders that do that and the open cut bidders, we'll have a comparison on cost. We will then pick the best methodology. And we will go right down that list of sixty-nine pipelines. Now, the sixty-nine pipelines represent about twenty-nine million dollars. And Mayor, I just wanted to make sure we could use up all of that twenty-five million we're, we're gonna get, so I, I didn't wanna leave you in the lurch. But you will see that happening. That will probably start March or so. Uh, and what I wanna do is I'm gonna have a public display like a, did you ever see one United Way? I was always United Way chairman in my community. We put a thermometer up and you keep filling it up. We're gonna do that with a water drop. And every time we put a main in, we're gonna fill in a, cuz I want people to know this. I think you want people to know this. So we're gonna be outward facing because we're doing good work and I want people to know it. Cuz I want our people to know it. That's important. You wanna talk about morale and pride in the department? That's how you build it. You do right things and you get recognized for doing right things. Okay? It's not a bunch of rhetoric. It's just do it and do it well. So we will be doing that and you will see that also happening. Regulatory compliance. This is my five, five things that I've always used at every job I've been to. We're installing and testing backflow devices on, at all city facilities. Uh, I'm a big fan of, if I wanna make you do something, I better be doing it. We didn't have backflows at all of our own facilities. We didn't have backflows on all our hydrant meters. Those days are over. We're gonna set the example, then we're gonna expect the community to do that and follow suit because what goes around comes around. Complete follow-up of three hundred and sixty-two identified potential cross-connection sites identified during that boil order effort. I'm very pleased to report to you that. We have remedied all of those except forty-four. And of those forty-four, eleven are pending a new installation. Twenty-seven are testing devices that hadn't been tested. That's non-compliance. Four are modifying their plumbing to eliminate the cross-connection. And two are actually gonna cap their irrigation system, so they will all be completely dealt with. And we continue to add to the list as we go out and do our, our inspections and stay on top of these things. Actually, I'm, I'm thrilled to tell you that we got our first complaint from a resident. That said, why are you bothering about me about this backflow prevention? So when I got that from the T C Q, I almost jumped for joy. Very seldom do you do that when you get a, 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 a complaint report from a, a regulator. But that was, that was a sign to them, and by the way, they noticed. And they've been down here and they've been very complimentary of what we're doing. That we're starting to get serious about something that's, that's serious. And so we dealt with the complaint and we were right and the person adjusted, but the point being. That's the kinda thing we're gonna see a little bit of, but that's okay. We'll, we'll, we'll handle that and we have respect for our customers, but we also have respect. For our responsibility to protect them. Uh, somebody might have asked about bacteria sampling sites. Some of the problems we've had, I believe, are sampling sites and sampling errors. In fact, I know that. And so we are reevaluating all those sites so that we get sites that are clean, so we can get a true, good sample. And, and so we'll, the part of the process is you go out and, we have a hundred and fifty sampling sites, by the way, in this city. And we did, we sample one of those every month. And so what you do is you go out and analyze those and you pick out better places, more easier, easier access, et cetera. Uh, and by the way, some of the sampling sites that we were using. I will say were littered with feces from animals and stuff. That's a problem. And when you try to get a sample and you contaminate the sample, guess what happens? So we're getting smarter about that. But the, the process is you go out and identify those and then you gotta submit your new sampling sites to the T C Q, so that'll take a month or two. We're already working on it. And it'll be done. And then of course, uh, I, I mentioned, we're in compliance with the lead and copper. And I, I can just say this to you, uh, and you could look at my history, but. I don't believe utilities should ever be out of compliance. Uh, we produce something that people drink and eat and bathe in. And, uh, I think we gotta be a hundred percent right a hundred percent of the time. Now, that's a tall order, but we can do it. And, and I think people are committed to do that. And so when you give us a compliment, we really appreciate it. I compliment my people a lot. We're getting better, uh, and we'll continue to do that. And with that, those are my comments.
Mayor, my name?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, just unfortunately not a compliment. When Arkansas and Bustamante meet, I know one of the city managers called you about it. I don't know if it's the first time, the first layman or the second one, but you hired somebody to do that paving there after your crews were there. Fixing up a water line over a month and a half ago. Uh, I called city manager Steve Landin. He called you. To this day, it's been five weeks. They still haven't repaired it. I don't know what company you're hiring or who you're using, but they did a terrible job when it came to paving that, that area.
Yeah, we, we, we know a little bit about that. Steve and I talked about that. Uh, that's a contractor project. Uh, but, uh, as I've told my folks, just because it's a contractor doesn't mean we're off the hook. We still have the responsibility. Uh, and we're working with, actually, we're working as, as we speak with Public Works. They're gonna do the paving there. Uh, John's gonna do it. The reason that wasn't finished, by the way, to be clear. Is the, we were told, or the expectation, I don't wanna get involved in that stuff. That, that was going to be paved by the city, so we did a temporary repair and didn't make the contractor do the finished repair. Cuz it was no sense doing a finished repair and then repave the street two months later or something. So there's a story behind the story, but in fact, that's the story.
Thank you.
Okay? But I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to be able to tell you that.
I do appreciate it. Thank you.
No, no problem. Uh, any, if there's any other, other questions?
I, I just failed to mention, I'm sorry, just failed to mention. That, uh, that part of that thing is some of those projects are handled by Public Works and. Public Works, our people are doing a, you know, working their behinds off and we're, given the, given the conditions that we have here in this town. Uh, but I did see what, uh, uh, Ruben saw and, and, but I got a great explanation from, from Steve on that and, and I appreciate that. It, it sort of just downplays your good work when you have the finished product being done by somebody else that just, just does not follow.
Yeah, but they're, they're, they're our partner and they do a good job and that's just one of those things and, uh, we need to get better at it, but. You know, no, I, I'm not gonna cast any aspersions. We're, we're the responsible group.
My point was that I, I was, I was, I really, uh, you know, being in here, uh, and people that I've, the limited amount of people that I've talked to here is, is that. That pride and that sense of responsibility and that sense of go-get-it-ness is, is really where I come from. And, and, um, and, and that's the type of, of, um, that's what we need to spread around here. You know, that's what it is. At the end of the day, that's what it is. And everything that I've done follows that same philosophy you just spoke about right now, so I'm really, really grateful for you to come up here. And, uh, because I was asked, my, my constituents, we haven't heard from this gentleman. He's been here for a while. What does he do for a living? what does he do for a living, what, where, where is he here? And all of a sudden, the explanation says it all. So thank you very much for being here. I truly appreciate it.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Pichikor, thank you for that very comprehensive report, and I know you had been letting council know that in January you would be giving us this, this update. But I do have a question about the Pico Water Treatment Plant, because prior to your arrival, it was undergoing repairs, revisions, and some to a very serious degree, and I just wanted to know if you had any update on how those repairs are going?
I do. We have a basin there that was built brand-new that we've never been able to use. It's half of our treatment chain. That's unacceptable. I guess there was a lawsuit, but we didn't get enough money out of it or something happened. Don't, don't need to go there. I've told the engineering firm, I wanna plan to be able to use at least three-quarters of that basin. I'm just not gonna spend all, all of the money to replace it a hundred percent. That was the first suggestion. So that's not acceptable to me. But that basin, three-quarters of it can be rehabbed, and, and there's a plan being produced that will be able to accomplish that. It'll probably cost us a few million dollars instead of fifteen, but that will get fixed. That's unacceptable. And I can tell you, I, I, I will tell all of you this, because I think it's important, and, and so, just give me a second. We have some facilities here that are not up to the standards of this community, and we're gonna address those, and so I'll be coming to you and telling you that.
There's, I'm, I'm sorry, just to hold, there, there also was an issue with the pumps, and there was some redesign going on to make sure that we could get enough pumps there functioning. It had, we'd gone down to, I think, one, and plans had already been established to increase the number of pumps and to, I think, realign them so that they could function properly in drawing water out of the river. How, how is that proceeding?
We have a, we've already done the pre-construction on a new pump station for the, for the one wing, so that, that will be in the, another ribbon-cutting, Mayor. We're gonna keep you busy.
That's all right.
Okay? That's, that's in the works also, and I, let me say this, because you bring this kind of stuff up. You know, if you have a savings account and there's no money in it, you don't have a savings account. When we put four pumps in a pump station, I expect four pumps to work all the time. We don't let two of them get broke because we got four, 'cause then we don't have any money in the savings account, right? So we're gonna be a hundred percent operating a hundred percent of the time. That's the standard. We'll get there. We've got some wastewater issues we need to work on, but that's gonna be the standard. The only reason you have duplicity of facilities is to make sure they all work or you don't have it. You know, people, I, I don't know how we get here, but it's not just Laredo, but that's my standard, and that's the one I will be articulating to my team.
All right, Mayor.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm trying to bring this back up, but I know that before Mr. Arceo was here, was trying to replace some, some pumps, or some pumps, there were, before he left, before he left, they were coming in from, I don't know where, across, I guess, across the pond, and they were gonna be replaced. Have we replaced those valves that are, that were gonna go to the Jefferson Plant? If I'm not mistaken, management, you may correct me if I'm wrong on this, I don't know if we replaced those valves, because two were down, and then we're gonna replace the other, or maybe it's the, we're talking about the Pico, but that's, that's, that was the plant, and I was just wondering, Mr. Buzz, by any chance, has those valves already come in, been changed out, or are we still, are there still the ship or the movement?
I can't speak to what you're asking, 'cause I don't know about any valves being ordered.
Yeah.
We had some pumps at one of our wastewater plants-
Yeah, I, I meant to say pumps, I'm sorry, I meant to say pumps.
Oh, okay, that we're supposed to come in-
Yes, sir.
And whatever, and we were down to one pump, which is I think what council member Sidora was talking about.
Was it for the Pico plant?
Pardon?
Was it for the Pico plant or was it for the Jefferson?
No, it was one of the wastewater plants. Pico's a water plant.
Okay.
Okay? But that's been dealt with.
Okay.
But again, that's the example. We had five pumps, and then somebody says, "Hey Buzz, we're down to one." I go, "Wha, what do you mean?" "Well, we got two over here, and then we just sent this one out." Again, that's, to me, that's not acceptable, and we'll get that fixed.
No.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Your presentation.
Mayor, before we go into executive session, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven.
Second.
Motion second, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passed. Motion to go into executive session. Under Texas Government Code five-five-one-zero-eight-seven, five-five-one-zero-seven-one, one A, five-five-one-zero-seven-four, A-one, and five-five-one-zero-seven-six, to include legal and any other staff member that is deemed necessary.
Second.
Motion second, in favor? Motion passes. Back to regular session. It is ten fifty-six and a half PM. Any items left?
Mayor, no. No action was taken on any of the items, on item number one-oh-five, just to direct staff to proceed as directed.
Motion second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passed.
Mayor, on one-oh-eight, that just should be, I'm sorry, one-oh-seven, that should just be tabled, that way you can take it up at the next meeting if you want to.
Motion to table one-oh-seven.
Motion second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Number one-oh, one-oh-six, the same thing. No action was taken, first step to proceed as directed.
Motion second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
And for number one-zero-eight, no action taken.
Motion.
Mayor, my, my, my item number one-two, B-three.
All right. Motion second.
Discussion with possible action to name- This question to possible, this question with possible action to name the Freddie Benavides Fieldhouse after Silvia Barrera, any, any matters there, incident there, too. The reason I'm trying to do this, it's, Ms. Barrera was, was, has been there, you know, started off with Sierra Roa High School, and back in, I wouldn't say nineteen eighty-five, and, you know, Coach Barrera has opened up alongside the CHS Educated Counters, Hours Towards Coaching she did with, with a lot of passion, to create wonderful ladies to later become great citizens and leaders in our community, so this is the reason I wanna name that, that, that building that was just added to, to Freddie Benavides, Silvia Barrera.
We'll second that motion.
Mayor, ma'am?
Motion second, go ahead.
So, Councilmember Duncan, we just had the city manager just talk to our, our committees, and there is a name, a name nominating committee. Would this not be an item that could go to the nomination committee? It sounds as if it'd be a, a very worthy candidate for, for placement on that, on that building. It would allow our committees to start functioning, we would be in a position where we could receive their input.